Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Douglas Planning Board meeting for Thursday, August 13th, 2020. The meeting is being recorded and available for viewing on the Douglas Public Access Channel and on our website. We'll come to order at 7:10. First item on the agenda. Public hearing continued. Douglas Planning Board Amendment to Zoning Bylaw. Amend the use table in town zoning bylaws by adding new industrial use. And we are going to, at the same time, open a new public hearing for this. Amendment to zoning bylaw. Amend the use table in the town zoning bylaws by adding a new industrial use. Possible votes. I'll read the announcement. Planning Board of the Town of Douglas will hold a public hearing to discuss proposed amendments to the town zoning bylaws. Public hearing will be held on Thursday, August 13th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. in the Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. The subject matter of the proposed amendments are indicated below. To see if the town will vote to amend the use table in the town zoning bylaws by adding a new industrial use as follows. 1A. Any manufacturing use, including processing, fabrication, and assembly conducted outside a building. And this would be in the industrial zone districts. With a footnote to be added to such use as follows. In addition to general special permit criteria, the planning board shall review any such application under the landscaping requirements for property lines standards under Section 5.3.3 and the environmental performance standards under Section 5.4 of the zoning bylaws. Copy of the proposed amendments are available for viewing in the Community Development Department during regular business hours within the Douglas Municipal Center, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. Ernest Marsh Jr., Chairman, Douglas Planning Board. Public hearing is now open.
Okay, did you open the old one and the new one?
You had to continue the old one from last meeting.
Did you have to continue the old?
Yeah, I did. I opened that one and opened the new one.
As you know, from that one, your recommendation was to have the Special Permit Granting Authority, you, the planning board, so EDC started the whole process all over.
Pardon me for saying, can you identify yourself to the world?
Oh, I'm sorry. Bob and Eric, Co-Chairmen of the EDC. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Eric.
Sorry. I think that's part of the thing.
Yeah, it is.
So we restarted the whole process all over again, so that's why we have a new public hearing on the new proposal, which is the planning board. So that's basically it in a nutshell right now. Took your recommendation, incorporated it, and now it's before you for your consideration.
Okay.
Can't ask for anything more. I mean, that makes more sense. Streamline for the applicant. Better for the process. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yep, I agree.
And it keeps the appeal process in town because now the ZBA, the zoning board of appeals, has an appeal procedure.
Right.
If you deny an issue or you deny a special permit, as opposed to them denying it, now goes to court.
Right, exactly.
It could be two new processes.
Makes it much easier all the way around.
Correct.
Anybody have any comments on this from the board?
No.
Straightforward.
Yeah. All right, anyone in the audience? Any comments, questions? Anybody online? Seeing none, hearing none? Entertained a motion to close the public hearings.
Can I ask a question?
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
What's the difference between the first one and the second one? They're worth it the same.
The first one would be under the authority of the zoning board.
That was the first application.
Yeah.
It also says amend the use table.
Now it'll be under the authority of the planning board.
And either way, it would have amended the use table.
Correct. Okay.
So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for the first one. Amendment to zoning bylaw by adding new industrial use with special permit from the zoning board of appeals.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Les for the discussion. Will call vote, please.
Les Stevens, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Aaron Sokrad, aye.
Jake Schultzberg, aye.
Vote is unanimous.
And then a move that we do not send a recommendation to the selectmen to town meeting.
On the first?
For that first one.
That makes sense.
Special permit, ZBIA.
Okay.
Second in that?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Tracy, seconded by Les. Will call vote.
Les Stevens, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Aaron Sokrad, aye.
Jake Schultzberg, aye.
Tracy Shuckey, aye.
Vote is unanimous, with the exception of Mike Suwicke being absent tonight's meeting.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for the amend the use table for special permit from the planning board.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Aaron. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Les Stevens, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Aaron Sokrad, aye.
Jake Schultzberg, aye.
Tracy Shuckey, aye.
Vote unanimous, minus Mike Suwicke. Okay, and recommend to?
Do you want to do?
Go ahead.
I'll make the recommendation to the favorable recommendation to the selectmen for the town meeting to endorse the amended zoning bylaws use table.
Motion made by Les.
Second.
Seconded by Mike Greco. Any further discussion? Will call vote.
Les Stevens, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Aaron Sokrad, aye.
Jake Schultzberg, aye.
Tracy Shuckey, aye.
Vote is unanimous, minus Mike Suwicke. All right.
Should you put the word included on the warrant, or is that what you basically said?
Yeah, the selectmen are responsible.
Favorable recommendation.
Favorable recommendation to the selectmen, and that puts it on the warrant.
That covers putting it on the warrant.
We're good.
Okay? All right, Bob, thank you for coming in.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Why didn't you do that last night?
Yeah, right. Public hearing continued. 93 Davis Realty Trust, application for site plan review, 93 Davis.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself.
The record show that Tracy is recusing herself.
Hello, good evening. My name is Paul Huckneck. I am with GBI, representing the project tonight at 93 Davis Street. And as the board may recall, we were in front of you possibly a month ago with some minor issues with the LEI, the Leonard Engineering Comment Letter to address. And also, I think that the largest thing that came out of that meeting was to have the traffic looked at from the site. So essentially, at this point, it is my understanding that from the latest Leonard Engineering Comment Letter, all of the issues that have been raised have been addressed, with the exception of they did have some further comments on the traffic. However, it's also my understanding that the applicant and Brian Carney, one of their consultants, met with the police chief today and essentially worked out an understanding to manage all the traffic management plan and also had an agreement on the satellite parking locations. There was an email sent today by the police chief stating such. You know, yes, it's my understanding that that has been agreed to and as far as I can tell, that addresses all the comments and conversations that we had and that Leonard has brought up as well.
Bill, do we have that?
In your packet, you have a copy of the email. We have several things. You have rounded comments from EBI in your packet. It's bound from the cell. That came first.
Here's Leonard.
Then you have Leonard's letter, which reviews that submittal.
And then chief.
Then you have two other documents. I have the ZNT Traffic Management Plan email from the police chief. I believe Nick's also online. And last, we have a draft, I want to emphasize and underline, draft of a decision. So there's a few things, we can talk about those sequentially, but so what I would like to do is talk to Cory and see if Cory has any comments.
Cory from?
Leonard.
Cory, you on?
Sorry, Cory, here you are. Do you have any?
Can you hear me?
Yep. Yep, we can hear you.
Yeah, I mean, I guess regarding, you know, according to Paul's sentiments, the only issue remaining was with the traffic analysis. They did provide a summary traffic analysis, but I think it didn't address, you know, whether there was any conflicting turning maneuvers or, you know, where they get, you know, their volume of traffic from, you know, like IT data. I think there's information in there, there's no backup, and it wasn't like an official study done by, you know, an engineer or stamper or anything like that. They do have a good plan for off-site parking and, as you mentioned, the traffic management plan. My recommendation was to actually just add a condition to that, didn't have to be that loud, develop the traffic management plan for when it's open and throughout the operation. So there is no queuing on Route 16. I think it was requested also to review the Route 16 traffic count that was not addressed in their analysis as well.
Well, I mean, we hear that we're saying, when they open, we'll address it. Should anything be proactively in place, a plan, for different scenarios based on, you know, what day of the week, what other traffic there is, I don't know, grand opening, all that, you know, like different categories? I mean, I don't mean today, but prior, like weeks prior, not the day they open. I mean, we understand that's going to morph and it's going to work, but it has to be, yeah, not the day of.
The chief has addressed something in his letter too, if you read that.
Yeah.
He does talk about prior to and upon.
Yeah, prior and upon, that's good, but not day of or day after. That's fine, and I'm all, you know, okay with that, it just has to be done prior.
Yeah.
So along those lines, let's say it warrants a turning lane or?
Kind of late, right?
Yeah, that's where the issue comes in, is if you do an analysis and it warrants a design change, then it becomes problematic. That's the only thing I offer. So, you know, my concern is, if you take a look at Blackstone Valley Shops, you know, perpetually you have police details on it. And that's kind of something we want to avoid, is having police details onsite constantly during operation. The point of the analysis is to identify potential issues and then mitigate those issues before approval.
Yeah, I mean, and I've driven by the one in Lester, which, when it first opened, it was pretty well, you know, chaos and stuff like that. And, you know, the storm has calmed down and it's not queuing or there's not the overflow that they once needed when they first opened. Same thing with the one in Oxbridge. You know what I mean? When they were first open, it was, you know, very high volume and everything like that was the latest thing in the block, and it's calmed down after that. So it's like, you know, almost like a Krispy Kremes, you know, when they first opened, they're like, every swarm storm, and then after, you know, that week.
But then you look at, like, Dunkin' Donuts at Plumber's Corner, okay? So even today, years after they were built, they have a queuing issue and the vehicles queue out onto Plumber's Corner.
Dunkin' Donuts on Plumber's Corner, oh, you talked, oh, I said farther down.
In White.
Farther down, it's not on the corner. I know what you mean.
Well, it's at Plumber's Corner. So identify a potential problem and then address the potential problem. So that's all I'm saying.
So has that not been, which I would agree, if it was planned, I mean, it would be a fail-safe way to queue up some traffic off the road because it's a single-lane road, and I'm not worried about coming this way from other, from Milford area, it's going that way. We all have to stop, and I mean, I get it, that business has to go on, but if there's continually police details and stop here, stop there, holding up traffic, that's not what a good planned business should be, even though I'm like totally in favor of the business. I mean, so is that something that we can recommend? I mean, we don't want, I mean, we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place. We want to be affirmative on projects, but you also want to be, have some foresight. And if the engineers aren't, why aren't the engineers not having foresight on this? Like, I agree with you in a way. Yeah.
That's my question, Paul. We asked for a mitigation study for the traffic. Why?
We did.
Why didn't we get one?
I'm not sure if Brian Carney is on the line. Brian, are you on the line? I guess not. Yeah, I mean, from what I understood, that was at least discussed today with the police chief and?
Yeah, but to the planning board. Something to us.
Pardon?
Well, something, we requested something, and we've been sort of sidetracked, you know. It's good you're talking to Chief Nick, I get that, the most important person when it comes to traffic, but we requested something and we don't want to go with, you know, fall on, what, some ears, deaf ears, you know, we, if we're requesting something, it should come before us, unless we're missing something and it's not important for us to have it, even though we asked for it.
I mean, I haven't looked at the data, I don't know what they submitted, I'm just basing it on what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I think, if I recall, we kind of called it an analysis, it wasn't necessarily, I think that word was actually used specifically, an analysis, where it wasn't necessarily a full-blown traffic study, and I think that's what the applicant tried to provide.
Can you provide the analysis? Paul, can you give us the analysis?
Yeah, they did.
Well, an analysis, and when we say analysis, we're not saying go out with car counting meters on Route 16 and get a true picture of the traffic count. We're saying, go to CMRPC and get traffic data, and I think I even used that last time, or MassDOT, where the information's freely available, use that as part of the analysis. When I think study, I look at a larger scale where you're having real data and you're, you know, counting cars, you're looking at turning movements, you know, I don't think that's the level we need for this. I think we need an indication of, are the vehicles, and I don't know if you provided this, Paul, I don't, are the vehicles queuing out into the road? Is there that big a demand in the traffic? I recall a couple of meetings ago, you know, 50 vehicles an hour, and I don't know if that's a real number or not. So if there's 50 vehicles an hour, I would think there's a potential to queue up on 16, and we need to know that you have adequate capacity inside the site to mitigate that. Likewise.
I also think, when that did come up, I think the applicant was also turning around and talking about the average time someone spends in the store and stuff like that.
And that's fine. And I don't know, maybe he submitted that, and Cory can tell me if I'm right or wrong. That's part of the analysis, that would tell us, you know, okay, you have nine vehicles queued up, there should only be six, demand for six vehicles. So, you know.
Yeah, I just, I know, when I look.
We avoided using the word study, traffic study, but we said traffic analysis or something.
Using available data and, you know, they have data, is my understanding, from other sites that they've done, so, you know, incorporating that with this site is kind of the analysis we're looking at.
So I was not involved in the traffic analysis. Brian Carney, from what I understand, did it, and unfortunately, he's not on the line tonight, but what I understand is that analysis was done with real numbers, meaning, again, this isn't a, there isn't a trip generation number for cannabis shop. Yes, maybe someday there will be, but right now there isn't. So basically, they were numbers as best as they could do, and they compared them to existing operating shops. I think they, I assume they pointed out that we have, you know, a fairly significant amount, more number of spaces than is required by the bylaw. And, you know, so at that point, we provided that analysis and then also talked about the traffic management plan, from what I understand, with the police chief. That's not to sidestep you, that's just to talk to, because we've also, the applicant has essentially committed to having a detail there onsite regardless of if that means, whether that has to do with queuing in Route 16 or not. So I think that to have that connection was important.
Thank you, Paul. And Paul, how many parking spaces do you have? Is it twice the required limit, or how many is the total you got? 50?
Yes, and I'm just going to open the plane real quick, so I'm telling you right from the plane.
I mean, I'm also looking at the curb cuts, right, the curb cut, which is from the east side. So if they had to do a cut, that curb cut, if they had to queue or do a turnoff, there is room there from that curb cut, from, again, with this analysis page. So there is room there. I mean, I've seen where Caroline's, you know, I kind of, since this project's been on our table and stuff like that, I've driven by there a few times to get an idea of some of the traffic and the flow and stuff like that at certain hours, and it's not as wild, wild west as it is when it opens up and when it was first adopted by the state, you know.
And there's going to be some saturation between the two anyway at some point.
Of course.
You know, where they're going to be cannibalizing, cannabis-izing each other a little bit.
I'm going to recognize the lady from the audience.
Jonathan Allison, 93 Davis.
Okay.
I had a comment, but question.
About this analysis, if we go back to our last meeting, we went from a study to an analysis because the numbers are not out there. And there's no one that has those numbers, and there's no one that has an expert to those numbers unless you have somebody that's in the business, as Brian Carney is. And you recognized him as an expert, and you recognized him as speaking logically and as an expert to put this together. You specifically asked him to do something with Caroline's, and in his traffic analysis, it says that PD Naturals performed their dispensary, their dispensary on February 2020. The trip generator estimate were made by observing two existing marijuana dispensaries at peak hours. Caroline's was one of them. So you have numbers, trip numbers. Not to mention, we have four times the parking space that you need by the bylaw. And in the end of Cory's decision, the bylaw seeking relief for providing a full traffic impact analysis, we determined it wasn't a study, it was an analysis by somebody that was logical and experienced, which was Brian Carney. Last time we called, it's Brian. He's not here tonight, he had a family emergency. Okay? A more detailed traffic management plan coordinated with the local police department during the early stages of the facility's opening that avoids any vehicle queuing on Route 16 should be submitted to the board should consider adding a condition. Cory is asking you to consider adding a condition requiring a traffic management plan. That's what you were given today. He specifically said it was between us and the police, the local police department to put this together. You have Caroline's observation, you have something that's only going to last for a couple of weeks, you have the police chief who's on board completely, who submitted that he himself, they have agreed to hire police details to assist with the traffic and have expressed their willingness to work with the department. If other issues arise at this time, I have no concerns and will continue to work with them as things move forward. I have satisfied the board by bylaw, I've satisfied it by parking spaces, I satisfied it by an analysis that you all agreed upon. If there's any discrepancies, I can queue up last meeting and what the discussion was between everybody and what we agreed on, what was going to be submitted. We wanted trip numbers, the trip numbers were submitted.
Excellent. However? Do we have the chief on, Bill?
The chief's on.
Chief's on.
Have any comments?
Chief, chief, are you there?
Over here, can you hear me?
Hey, chief.
How are you, everybody?
Good, thank you.
Say hi for me.
You have questions for me, or do you want me to comment on the meeting that I had with the owners today?
I don't think we have any questions yet. If you could comment on the meeting you had, and that would shed some clarity on it.
Sure, I'll fill you in. I spoke to both of the owners today, and we talked about, I mean, obviously, you know, there's a difference between a traffic management plan and a traffic analysis and study. Traffic analysis and study is out of my league. You know, that's not something that, that's out of purview of the police department, obviously, that's something that's not prior to. However, the conversation I did have with them was about some of the traffic concern that could arise depending on the amount of business that they're going to do, which I would assume would be probably heavy in the beginning, but who knows? I don't think it will be like a Lester was, when that was the first one that opened up and it was swarmed because it was the only one that was open in the state of Massachusetts at the time. Now you don't have that issue, and, you know, they, we discussed the plan, we discussed the 50 parking spots that they have, we discussed how there's room for cars to get in, cars to get out, discussed their overflow plan, which I thought was pretty good because they have at least, I believe, 20 additional parking spots across the street, and then further down the road over in Oxbridge, up to 500 parking spots if they needed them, and they could shuttle people in. So they showed willingness to work with us if there were any issues. It's just like, and we discussed traffic details in the beginning with something new like that, probably going to need them for the first couple of weeks until everything gets settled, but there's no way for me to tell how much business that they're going to do or how much of an impact it's going to be with cars getting in and out of it. Just, I don't know. But I can tell you that they did express willingness to work with the PD, whatever we suggested, whatever issues arose traffic-wise, that they would be willing to work with us to try and resolve it. So that was the basis of our meeting today. As far as details, the numbers of cars, they, obviously, I couldn't provide that to you, and I don't think they could either as far as what they're going to do for business, but it's really all they have to have.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Appreciate it.
Hold on to the line, in case anybody has any questions.
Yeah.
We'll have any questions?
I got a question for this guy. In addition to the traffic analysis, we talked about getting information on signage, if it's going to be used.
Yeah, signage, it's.
Do we have that in?
It's in the packet, yeah.
That's included in the packet, yeah.
I was looking, I didn't see it, but I took your word for it.
Bill, any questions, comments?
Chief, can you, can you talk about?
It's not in this packet.
The remote parking and the shuttling portion of the conversation?
Sure, we touched on that, and they told me that they had some parking at 118, I believe, and additional spots, and if it was necessary, they had a property in Oxbridge.
I'm looking at this.
Couldn't have up to 500 spots, and they was looking at shuttling these people over either with a shuttle or a driving service, back and forth, if it got to that point.
And chief, that's pretty similar to what Lester did. I think when they first opened, they did shuttles and they did offsite.
Yeah, that's exactly what they did when they first opened, because they needed some off-site parking. And I think even in Lester's case, I'd have to double-check, I could be wrong, I think there was a lot of problems with the flow through the neighborhood, so I think they were trying to put them in a different area, just because of the amount of people that they had at the time, and to relieve some of the traffic.
Yeah.
So chief, we were also looking at having a number of no parking signs erected on Route 16 and potentially on Monroe Street, did you say that?
Yeah, yeah, Monroe, that's fine.
So Todd, how do you feel about that?
No parking signs?
Yes.
Yeah, I would agree, I wouldn't want any parking on Route 16 or Monroe. I would say the parking should be restricted to the business itself or the overflow parking lots.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
I've driven by the Lester one, the last, twice, the past week, and it's not as, and the volume isn't, you know, more than 10, 12 cars at a time. I mean, I've driven by there, headed to dinner, before dinner, and after dinner, and stuff like that, so that's kind of peak hours.
Before dinner.
Before dinner. And after dinner.
That's why you had a bigger.
No, I just, no, but, I mean, but the late hours, you know, when people are off work and stuff like that, so it doesn't have, you know, it's, you know, 10 to 12 cars, so, I mean.
Bill, any further questions?
I don't want to.
Anybody else have any questions for the chief?
I'm good.
Yes, I do. Can I speak, Mr. Chairman?
I just, I'm talking to the board right now, who am I talking to?
Jeremy Plank for 63 Monroe.
All right.
I am 73, right across. I own 73 right across the street.
Yeah, hold on, hold on one second, Jeremy. Nobody else on the board has any questions?
I'm all set. I'm good.
All right, Jeremy, go ahead.
One question.
Yes, chief, nice to talk to you again. Jeremy Plank for 63 Monroe, I own 73, the field right across the street, and you said that there was additional parking across the street. Is that, is that Solawolf parking lot, and if so, is there gonna be a crosswalk?
I think they designated 118, you know, Deep Davis Street, I think it was.
It's 118, and it wouldn't be a crosswalk, it would be shuttled.
Shuttle, it's farther down the road.
It would be a shuttle, Jeremy.
Yeah. It's not Solawolf.
It would, it would, it would be like a parking lot across, the chief just said across the street, I was confused, sorry.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jeremy, I should've been clear, they did give me the address of 118.
Yep.
So it would be in that parking lot, they have 20 spots, and then they would shuttle them over, so there would be no need for a crosswalk.
Yep, okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have anything for the chief?
Oh, good.
All set with him. All right, chief, I guess that's it. Thank you for coming on and talking with us.
Okay, thank you, have a next day.
You too.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
All right. Anything further?
Good to move forward.
Bill, everything else on the application is complete?
Yep.
All water and everything's?
LEI, yes.
Okay. Okay. Paul, you have some waivers you want asked for?
Well, yeah, you should have, I believe it's August 11th, is the most recently requested request. And there is four of them.
Okay. They're in the draft decision as well. Hey, Ernie?
Yes.
They're in the draft decision, be easier to.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Easy to look at them, the sections in there. So. Right here. Paul, do you want to just start with the first waiver? 5.2.1.
Hold on one second, Paul. All right, you, you want to do the waivers first?
Just so he can.
If we decide we can close the public hearing.
Yeah, that's what he asked us for.
All right, go ahead, Paul, take the first waiver.
All right, number one is section 5.2.1 of 5.2.6. The section is size, I guess technically, but it states adequate off-street loading spaces or loading areas shall be provided and maintained by the owner of the property for each non-residential building or use which is erected, enlarged or altered after the respective date of by law according to the following regulations. Loading may shall not be less than 12 feet in width, 65 feet in length, or 14 feet in height, exclusive of driveway and new brick six. So then our request is the applicant respectfully requests a waiver as all deliveries will be made when delivery begins. The applicant agrees to a condition in the decision that all deliveries will be conducted outside of business blocks.
Yeah, that's fine.
But is our, our request essentially is to not have that space because we don't need it.
We'll knock these off one by one.
Paul, Paul, can you tell me what the delivery hours are, or the operating hours are?
I would defer to Teresa, who's in the room.
We're looking at 10, 10 in the morning to 9 at night right now.
9 at night.
So all deliveries, all deliveries will be done before time because by law, CCC law, nothing can be delivered while there's anyone on the premises.
Right, right.
So anything, the same thing with disposal.
Yep.
Disposal cannot be done while there's anybody on the premises because of what might be in that, in that.
Yep.
Containment.
Information.
Okay. Thank you, Teresa.
I got no problem with that.
Bill, did you get those hours?
Yeah, that's seven days a week.
Seven days a week.
Okay.
Oh, no blue lines. Is it gone off?
That's yours, Mike.
Why not do seven days a week now?
I know, what's the difference?
All right, any questions on?
I don't, I think I'm good with that one. I think we covered it before, and I think we granted it before to, I think we granted it to someone else at one point.
You want to vote on them separately, you want to do them all in?
Just do them all in.
All right, Paul, go ahead to the next one.
Number two, section 9.4.4.1.1A, contents of plan, and the requirement in the bylaw is site layout which shall contain the boundaries of the lots and the proposed development, proposed structures, drives, parking, fences, walls, walks, outdoor lighting, loading facilities, and areas for snow storage after clouding. The first sheet in this plan shall be a locust plan at a locus at a scale of 1 inch equals 100 feet from the entire project in relation to existing areas, buildings, and roads for a distance of 1,000 feet from the project boundaries or such other distance as may be approved or required by the board. So our request is the applicant respectfully requests a waiver from the requirement of locust plan at the scale of 1 inch equals 100 feet. Project locust plan is 1 inch equals 200 feet. The applicant also requests a waiver from showing loading facilities or a designated loading area for proposed use for after deliveries on vans only. So that plays into essentially to be able to show a thousand-foot radius, you need to have it at a 200 scale, 100, it doesn't really fit well. So we did a 200, and then obviously the second part with the loading area plays back into the first waiver.
Yeah, that's okay. No.
Any comments, Boyd?
Nope.
Bill, anything?
Nope.
That was easy.
Yeah.
It is, it is.
Okay, Paul, next one.
Number three, section 9.4.4.3, summary of contemplated projects. The requirement in the bylaw, a written summary of the contemplated project shall be submitted with the site plan indicating where appropriate, the number of dwelling units to be built in the acreage and residential use, the evidence of compliance with parking and off-street loading requirements, the forms of ownership contemplated for the property, and a summary of provisions of any ownership or maintenance thereof, identification of all land that will become common, public land, and any other evidence necessary to indicate compliance with this bylaw. And our request is the applicant respectfully requests a waiver from this section as there are no other contemplated projects other than the planned project. So essentially, we're saying we don't have future plans to show you because this is what will happen on the property.
Let's go on the next.
Okay.
Bill, any comments?
Nope.
Boyd?
Nope.
All right, last one, Paul.
Yep, now, number four, section 9.4.4.5, onsite and offsite impacts. The requirement in the bylaw, the planning board may require narrative assessments of the onsite and offsite impacts of proposed project, including traffic, drainage, noise, and other environmental factors. The board may require that such narrative assessments be prepared by qualified experts. Our request to the applicant, the applicant respectfully requests a waiver from this section. Information provided highlights information requested in this section and states it may be required. A traffic impact analysis has been provided along with two satellite parking locations. So what this does is, you know, assuming if the board agrees with what we've done and the method that we used, given a unique situation, this kind of wraps it up with the bylaw, so it allows you to give a waiver to let us do it this way because, again, it is a unique situation.
Yep.
Thank you, Paul. Boyd, any comments, questions? Bill?
Yeah, so my concern is the way the waiver request is being requested, you know, they did do a drainage analysis, they did somewhat of a traffic study, and lastly, environmental factors, I know sometimes facilities similar to this might have an odor issue. So I'm not suggesting that they submit it now, however, I would suggest that if we find that there are complaints due to odor, or there are complaints due to traffic, that the board has the authority, and this would be a condition in the decision.
Sure.
To, to request an analysis and a mitigation plan to deal with the issues.
Should that arise?
If it should.
Should it arise?
Should the board determine that it's an issue?
Okay, we've got to revisit it or come back to it.
I can answer the odor factor right now. Everything we have is gonna be prepackaged before it comes into the building, so there is no odor. In fact, through the CCC and the regulations, we don't have to have a ventilation system because we have no open product that will be processed and weighed and put forth to the customers, so that's a moot point. As far as the traffic goes, we've already discussed that, we've already met the bylaws on that, and also, it's only, it's only anywhere from a one to a three-week trial period that where it's going to, what has been shown through the CCC, the more of these that open up, the less is the impact of the traffic. Not to mention, it's like, you keep trying to compare it to like a Duncan Dorrance or this, it's not. This is something totally separate, and you have to keep it separate. And with that being said, you only have to go, you have to go with the people who know what you're talking about, as my consultant, who has opened many of these.
It was still the planning board.
So it's only a two to three-week process.
Right. That's what the chief covered.
It doesn't hurt to leave it there.
Would you be opposed to, would you be, would you be opposed to a condition being in the?
Oh, I'm not opposed to a condition at all, no.
You're just answering the question.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm just answering the question, I just wanted to put the odor part to bed, that we don't even have to have a ventilation system because everything's coming in already prepackaged. There's nothing open on the premises, that's done. And as far as the analysis, that's the problem.
Yeah, yeah, we're good. Okay.
So I would suggest that we ask the applicant to consider revising the request for that waiver, to the point as maybe add a line in there that says.
Should there be an odor?
Unless conditioned in the decision. Or ask, as maybe can, the waiver is granted as part of the application, and Paul, I can, I can look to you for some help on the lingo, but we're, you know what we're trying to do here. If we find there's a problem on those three things, we want to have the ability to.
Revisit.
Revisit it.
Yep.
Right, I mean, I think you, I mean, just the, I mean, kind of what we're talking about, you could grant the waiver with the exception of those things, and then, and refer to the condition.
Right, yeah, that's up. Yeah, just minor rewording of it.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
Okay.
So we'll strike traffic?
Yeah.
We don't need to strike drainage, I think everybody's satisfied.
It's all set, yeah.
So just traffic and environmental factors?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that reasonable?
That's reasonable.
Yep.
Otherwise, we're.
We'll do it with that.
Okay.
Do we make a motion on the waivers in general?
We can, yeah, we can do that. Before we close anything, I want to, before we ask any questions from the public, we'll vote on the waivers after we give.
Yep.
Okay, anything else, Bill?
Nope.
Good. The application is good to go as far as you can see with the.
Well, I mean, we've discussed the things that I had concern about.
Okay. All right.
We've heard from the audience.
All right, does anybody, it's a public hearing, does anybody have any questions or comments?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Jeremy?
Yes.
Do you have anything new for the planning board? We have all the comments.
Yes, I do. I did, I did get the LEI report today, it's 16 pages, and I really, really haven't grasped my, my brain around it.
Okay.
But the number of parking spaces is 50, minus employees, which is eight, it brings the parking spaces down to 42. And I'm a little concerned about people parking on the other side of, or either side of Davis Street, up and down. I'm a little concerned about that, and hopefully the police will be able to take care of that.
Yep.
That's one of my concerns.
And we are, they are gonna put up no parking signs, Jeremy, too.
Yeah.
Yes, I did see that, and I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. That would be, that would be very, very nice.
Okay.
Up along Monroe Street, too.
Okay.
I do have some concerns with the intersection of Monroe and Davis. You've got, when you pull out of Monroe, which would be, I believe, the exit to, from the dispensary, onto Monroe Street, that would have probably been lead going on to Davis. Both sides have God railers. It, the sight lines are very bad, and it's just something that maybe you might want to consider. It's just, I just hate to see somebody get killed right there in that intersection, right in front of Solawolf. And I, I'm just a little concerned, the LEI report did mention something about, they had some concerns about shields on lights to spread the light. I know we're talking about the diameter of the, you know, the light. I, and they noticed that it wasn't, it wasn't in the report what they mentioned.
Yep.
So I, I just don't want lights shining on me in my bedroom.
Yeah.
That's all, and the other thing, too, Mr. Chairman, remember, the land values on the other side of the road now is gonna go down extremely.
Okay.
Because you see, shouldn't be putting these things in a resident, in a residential neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Jeremy.
So we've addressed the park. Parking and the lights have shields on them in the back so they don't reflect in the neighborhoods, so.
Who's talking?
All right. Oh, Bill's gonna mute him. So I'm good to close?
Anybody else in the audience or online have any questions or comments?
Hearing none.
Hearing none?
Okay.
All right, Boyd?
Yep, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for 93 Davis Street Realty Trust.
One second. Wait, aren't we gonna, weren't you gonna make a motion on the waiver request?
Close the hearing. Do the waivers after we close the public.
Okay. Second.
All right, motion made by Les to close the public hearing, seconded by Aaron. Any further discussion? I'll do a roll call vote, please.
Left Stevens eye.
Mike Brecko eye.
Aaron Socrat eye.
Jake Schulzberg eye.
All right, looks the record show that Tracy is recused and Mike is absent.
Yep.
All right.
Bill, can I hear you if you ask everybody to? We're getting some feedback from one of the telephone people.
Could somebody check?
We can mute you if, if you can't get it under control.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve, grant the waivers, section 5.2.1, section 9.4.4.1A, and section 9.4.4.3, and section 9.4.4.5 with the edits that were proposed as discussed.
Oh, as discussed, okay. Motion made by Les, second. Second.
Jake.
Jake, seconded by Jake. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Left Stevens eye.
Mike Brecko eye.
Aaron Socrat eye.
Jake Schulzberg eye.
Okay, looks the record show Tracy is recused and Mike's over, Chris absent. Vote is unanimous amongst the board. All right, so, Bill, we have to draft it.
I have a draft here. I mean, I would be more comfortable if we had a little more time to work on the conditions and, you know, if you think of something, I'll add the things we discussed. I'd like to run it by Lennard and Town Council to get their feedback.
Yeah.
Before we land the plane on it, that would be my recommendation.
Okay.
And then we can come in to sign if we want to, right? Or are you waiting? What are you doing?
You're just...
They can do anything they want at their own risk.
Yeah.
I mean, it's up to the board.
We've got a draft decision, right? There's nothing in here that...
No, I'm just taking notes. There's a few things I'm going to add that we just talked about, obviously.
So we'll have it, could have it for next meeting?
I could have it for the next meeting.
This is six meetings.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
This is six meetings today.
This is three.
There's three meetings just to get to peer review, and this is three meetings after that. So what we have here now, it's all at my risk that we do your edits before the next meeting.
It's highly atypical that we have a final decision before, drafted, before the board even votes.
It's sitting in front of you right now.
As I pointed out...
Hold on to us.
I'm sorry.
As I pointed out, this is a draft decision. I have a number of conditions that I'd like to add. I'd like to run it by Town Council. I'd also like to get Leonard's input on it.
Can we...
If it's done ahead of time, are we able to sign it if it's done?
You can certainly review it in advance, but the issue becomes if someone has an issue with one of the conditions or wants to add something, you know...
So the draft that you wrote out hasn't gone through review?
I sent it to Town Council as soon as it was drafted. He hadn't responded yet.
Okay. I mean...
Want to ask when the next meeting is?
The 10th of next month?
So if everybody's in agreement with the conditions, can they either come in and sign it? Or can they perhaps, I don't know, do you ever do the sign it tonight and then assuming everybody's in agreement, release it?
Well, what we can do is change the signature page. And the board authorized the chairman to sign it.
We've done that in the past, yeah.
Yeah. And then I could work and get those things done that we talked about.
And have...
The board would rely on the chairman's...
Discretion.
Discretion to sign it.
Okay, and we could...
If the board's good to go.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
If you can get it done way before the next meeting.
Correct. You know what I mean, and do we think we can get all that done, you know, next week with Jay, Leonard, all that feedback?
Of course, I'll email it out to everybody.
Yeah, and if there's anything there, but then maybe by Monday, the following week, whatever that is. I don't have a calendar in front of me, but just trying to look at the timeline because...
Well, Monday is the 17th.
Yeah, so the 20, 24th, possibly have Ernie sign it and...
Yeah, so two weeks from now, week and a half.
You know.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, we want to get it done.
No, of course. But we don't want... We closed the public hearing, we've agreed to the waiver.
Waiver?
And we don't normally have a draft decision in front of us the night of the final call.
This came in right when COVID was hot.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
That's part of the reason it took so long to actually start the public hearing. And once we did get in, this is only the third meeting we're having.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we want this approval to be beyond reproach. You know, we want, this business is going to be here forever.
Absolutely.
And that, we want to have the, you know, T's crossed, I's dotted and...
So do we, you know, I'm good with Ernie signing off on the decision. You know, if that can happen on the, you know, that town hall is open on, you know, if that can happen by the 20th or the 24th.
I'd be surprised if it takes longer.
Correct, correct. You know what I mean?
For next week.
Next week, and you know what I mean, that's a week from today, would be the 20th for it to be signed.
As soon as you get it, you see it, you sign it.
Yeah, he's going to...
As long as everything has been, Bill is feeling comfortable.
Town Council says it's good.
Yeah, when did it go to Town Council? Bill, by...
This afternoon, as soon as I finished it.
Okay.
What's wrong? I was rushing to get it.
No, no, I just, Jay's got time to cycle it.
I just wanted to go over the timeline and I wanted to nail down the timeline because, as I said, I can queue this up. It was five weeks the first time that I was promised it was going to be, the draft decision would be drawn up and it would be circulated. We got to the last meeting and I was given an apology that you didn't have time to do it because you were too busy. And then we were asked twice if it would be done by this meeting and it was said, yes, by everyone here that this would be done at this meeting. Cross the Ts, dot the Is, and sign off on it at this meeting. So therefore, I understand we have some things we have to do. I get that. But I'm respectfully requesting, as, I'm sorry.
Les, Stevens.
Les, I'm sorry. If we could have this wrapped up by the 24th.
Yeah, that's what we're...
That's our plan.
Exactly what we're discussing, yeah. No, no, not another meeting, that's what we're putting on.
We'll go to the next meeting.
Yep.
The hearing's ready for the council and Leonard and Bill's got it ready, I'll come in and sign it.
Okay, but we're going to use the timeline of by the 24th.
Yeah.
By the 24th, Bill, you think?
You know, except if buildings get shut down, COVID explodes.
It ain't to put a timeline on it, it's healthy.
Well, that's it, it's going to be hung over our heads if we do it.
I think, I think, I think you're going to target, a target, you know what I mean, a target of that, you know what I mean?
Target of that, but...
That's all. We don't know how long Legal Counsel is going to say, if Jay's away for three days? No, 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 but if Jay's away for three days and stuff like that, we don't know how long it would take.
No matter how we, if we go to the next meeting, it's certainly going to be longer than if we do it this...
Correct, so...
And I don't think anybody, if we go till our next meeting and do it then, it's certainly going to be longer.
But that was not what we're doing.
Correct.
Than what we're doing tonight.
Right, so we're trying to pull in all of us in the same direction.
We'll get it as quick as we can. Public hearing's closed, your waivers are granted, all it is is drafting the final decision.
Right.
As soon as we get it done.
And if it's the 20th, it's the 20th.
I can't put a deadline on it.
No, no, that's not what I mean. Like, everything is said and done, you're the one that's going to stop.
In a second.
Whoever's on the line, could you please check your feedback or silence your mic, please?
Yeah.
You're really interfering with our meeting.
Who's on the line? Shut everybody down. You do it.
No, can you do it? I will ask for that to be done.
Yeah, just mute.
I'll mute them all if we have to.
Yeah, all right, so, thank you. So I'll make a motion to authorize Ernie to sign the 93 Davis decision as soon as it's prepared and reviewed by Legal Counsel and the edits have been adjusted.
Hold on a second there. A motion made by Les, seconded by Mike. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Les Stevens' eye.
Mike Greco, eye. Aaron Sokrad, eye.
Jake Schulzberg, eye.
Okay.
Okay, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's get in touch with you as soon as I sign it. All right?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Paul. Good night.
Bye.
We've done that for other applicants, so...
I don't know who I'm blocking, but I apologize.
Well, the noisy phone.
Yeah.
So the, this...
Let the record show that Tracy's back.
The smell bill, I think, is more of that, the grow facility, when they have to vent out those rooms. Which is like, no, no, it's a valid point. Oh, yeah, yeah, you don't know if things change over time.
Thank you, Paul.
Hundred percent.
Doing a good job.
So, good. Yep. Are we on time? We're, oh, close, close to being back on schedule. Byron, I think it is?
Okay, next item on the agenda.
Byron.
Public hearing continued. Cooperstown Road Realty Trust, application for the residential compound Hawk Hill Farm.
Yep.
768 and 772 Northwest Main Street. Possible vote. Request for continuation.
Byron's here.
What?
He is here.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm here for something else.
Okay, he's continuing, okay. You're right.
If you're here, you might as well just say, "Hi." You're here for Cahill Town Realty.
Cooperstown Road Realty Trust.
Hold on, hold on.
Accept this letter as a formal request to continue the public hearing for the above referenced project to September 10th, Planning Board Meeting.
Hold on.
Just a second.
So the folks that were online, I think there was also members in the audience last time that are here for the Cooperstown.
This is his mother-in-law and I'm using his hotspot on his phone.
Who's talking?
So Cooperstown Realty, the 745 on our agenda, has been continued to the September 10th.
Yeah, no, it hasn't been yet, and when I'm ready to take questions from the audience, I will say so. Let me read the, let me read the letter, please. All right, "On behalf of the applicant Cooperstown Road Realty Trust, please accept this letter as a formal request to continue the public hearing for the above referenced project to September 10th, Planning Board Meeting. For what this serves you need at this time. Should you have any questions or require additional information, please contact this office. Very truly yours, Andrew Survey and Engineering, Byron and Jay Andrews." All right, so the public hearing is now open. I will entertain a motion to continue the public hearing.
I'm not sure who that person was talking to.
Oh, I'm sorry, is somebody on, hold on, is somebody online that wants to ask something about this?
Someone, is it?
Sounds like a kid.
Julie?
Yep.
No, not Julie. It's in the background.
Sorry.
What is going on? This is like...
So, oh, all right, yeah.
We'll mute them. I'm not going to do a meeting this way.
Yeah.
Shut the door.
There you go. You got it, there you go, Bill. Good, excellent. All right, I'll make a motion to continue Cooperstown Realty Trust to our September 10th meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Les, seconded by Tracy. Any further discussion?
Um...
All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Wait, hold on.
Time.
Just going to amend it to have a time.
Seven o'clock, Bill?
7:15.
7:15, okay.
Okay.
Yep.
I second that.
All right, Tracy seconded that, okay.
Jeez. Les Stevens' eye.
Mike Greco, eye. Aaron Sokrad, eye. Jake Schulzberg, eye.
Tracy Sharky, eye.
Yep.
Vote is unanimous, we'll continue September 10th at 7:15, Bill?
Yep. Bill?
Somebody has to take care.
Hold on. Bill, those two, those two phones that are in green, if you scroll down. Yep, that one, mute that one, mute the one below it. Yep, can mute those, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, Les.
It's hard to tell when Bill, I mean, because you can see the volume things move on, I mean, get busy with...
So the phone people, sorry, you're muted.
You can unmute yourself.
Yeah, when your time is here.
Yep.
Good, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda. 746 A&R Plan, Bruce Thomas. Gilbo Street. Possible vote.
Mr. Lane? Mr. Lane? Did you drive by the building? Okay. I think we saw this at the last.
So you do have a packet, the top of the packet is a letter from Lane and Hammer.
Yep.
And then the plan is attached. It may not be the very last plan, but it's very similar.
Yeah, okay, oh, yeah, because I know. And I think this is the plan that Jay weighed in on as well, Counsel.
We had comments late, before the last meeting, so they asked for continuation, so this is me.
Yep, okay.
It's what ships the property line, it should be the easiest thing you do all night.
Seven feet, right?
Okay.
Eight feet?
Sounds good to me.
Seven feet, huh?
Eight point three feet.
Eight point three. That point three, you're asking a lot.
I'll make a motion.
Yes, Trace?
To endorse the plan for Bruce Thomas Gilbo Street.
Oh, wait, let's get some comments. Anybody have any comments?
No comments.
Also.
Yeah.
So I just want to make the board aware, as well as the applicant aware, that currently, it's my understanding that these lots of pre-existing non-conforming lots, by modifying this property line, they will take away that pre-existing non-conforming status.
Right.
I did email previously that comment. I'm not sure if it was shared with the individual property owners, but I encourage you to share that with them.
So your status changes in front of zoning board if they go for, you know, variance at some point versus a special permit? It's going to change.
If they apply for a building permit, in theory, they'd have to go to zoning board.
Yeah, but, so, Bill, so one of the parcels is non-conforming as it stands right now, based upon the frontage, that would be parcel or lot, parcel C, Lot 1. But parcel D is conforming with today's...
Correct.
They just become a little more, double, in a little more area.
That's correct. So the issue is, while parcel, Lot 1, Lot 1, proposed Lot 1, is making a better situation, it's still non-conforming for frontage.
Correct.
Okay. So looking at this from a dimensional perspective, and I just want the board to be aware of this, the board could withhold endorsement for that reason, okay?
Yep.
The thing that I'm concerned about is there's a potential for a third lot out here.
I think it needs a...
And so you have, you know, what, the 80 feet frontage, how much?
It's 100 feet.
Eighty feet, eighty feet, you know, with getting a conforming frontage, you know, is something that I wanted to point out to the board for consideration, that's all.
I think, I think...
What's your feeling on that?
I think, well, you know, driving by and look at the topography of any potential with Lot 2 of being divided again, it would require additional, you know, site work, a tremendous amount of site work to create that additional lot there. It's also that Lot 1, Lot 2 is conforming today with meets all zoning requirements today, and we're approving Lot 1 by the additional eight feet. So, and, you know, the boundary line with the, the property line is, where that sits, doesn't move, so it's already established as a pre-existing structure. So I'm good with the plan and the A&R as it sits. And I know Jay, Jay Talman, our lawyer, reviewed it and he said it was an improving situation, even though it was non-conforming, so it was making it better, it was headed in the right direction. So you're not making it worse. So, I'm good with it.
Thank you, Les. Anybody else have any comments?
I have a motion on the floor to endorse the plan.
I'll second the motion on the floor.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Les. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Les Stevens' eye.
Mike Greco, eye. Aaron Sokrad, eye. Jake Schulzberg, eye.
Tracy Sharky, eye.
Motion passes.
Please.
Yeah, we got a mile out there, how many miles?
Yeah, just one.
Have a pen, Bill?
They're over there.
I only need two.
Yeah.
Could I grab a pen for me?
Okay. Oh, yeah, the pens are off.
Are those miles or are those... Can't use the staff there, huh?
It's not awesome, sorry.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Birkenstocks. Oh, you know what they are? You don't have any Birkenstocks?
No.
You knew the brand, you never said it.
And it's 813, right?
Yes, it is.
It's your call, it's you.
But you'd rather, you'd really rather not see them, please.
That's right.
Yeah, if you have a Sharpie, that, that's fine.
Sharpie will be fine.
And there's a, looks like a few.
Another Sharpie.
You know, blood works too.
You a worker?
Much.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Where's that open? Just through the cap away. Tied up pins that don't work.
Yeah.
One page. That's all we got. What's this staff? Little staff.
Yeah.
We have so many of those.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
We're not.
What are you going to do?
Just one copy?
Yeah, just so we.
For now, yeah, we'll sign the rest of them at the end of the day.
Yeah. The quick stamps.
Perfect.
What was that?
Good. Could we just, yeah, because we're scanning them in these days.
We'll sign notes at the end of the day, Bill.
Oh, he's over there.
All right, moving on.
Um, Aaron and Les aren't here.
Aaron hasn't signed it yet?
No, we're, they're not here.
Oh. Where'd Les go?
I'm not far here.
All right, we're going to, if you turn over your agenda, we're going to go to additional business. We have, the other application came in today.
Oh, geez, I didn't see the back of this.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Are we on?
I'm depressed. I'm depressed now.
Do we, do we finish KL? Or where?
He came in late today, so we're going to continue on.
Scary.
Okay.
Fair enough. Yep, let's go.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, you ready, Boyd?
Yes.
All right, KT KT LLC Restoration Plan Bond Possible Vote.
All right. Yep.
So in your packet, you have a package from McIntyre's?
Yep. There we go. Guys are.
I thought we were a sleepy little town. What happened?
Four seventy?
That's mental.
John Tomer, McIntyre Loom.
Yep.
Tom McIntyre, McIntyre Loom and KT KT LLC.
Ian McIntyre, McIntyre.
Okay, thank you.
So we're here tonight to talk to you about the restoration of four seventy Northeast Maine. We were here in September twenty nineteen, laid out a plan, but it was incomplete. We had revised what we had said in twenty nineteen, said in the letter, as well as, you know, give full schedule going forward to complete the restoration of the, of the property.
Okay.
In the map, you'll see, and it's all approximates, approximately.
So you had it?
Yep.
You got a square screen?
Yep.
The total area is approximately forty-eight acres.
It's forty-eight.
Four acres of store.
Okay.
Roughly five acres that the files currently sit on.
Yep.
And then the balance of the roughly twenty-three acres or twenty-three acres is open in two D's.
Mm-hmm.
We plan on doing that in three phases. One, this phase, phase four, being this fall up to this line, phase five, next fall, twenty twenty-one, and last phase in the fall of twenty twenty-two. Along with that, so we don't go out of business, we're asking that the areas that are reclaimed, phase one and phase two and phase three, that I took a ride with Bill about a week and a half ago, so we saw fully vegetated, have been for years, you know, we've been mowing them. We're asking that those areas be signed off on, so that outside of the purview of the restoration bond as they are restored, and then we can then use those areas to stockpile them there. Obviously, there would be no, there are three more.
Yeah, no excavation. Stockpile them.
So, so I think, put it another way, what John is suggesting, that as they progress with the restoration, and they moment see these areas, they actually, once they get the vegetation, they fall out of the purview of the board.
Yep.
So.
Yep, fair enough.
So then he can use it as he feels.
Yep.
Comes up beautiful on satellite, you can see all the greenery and all of which you mowed.
Yeah, it really has come in. And Bill took some pictures, I don't know what you have.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't.
Do we have the bond amount?
Uh, I don't have the same.
I want to say it's approximately ninety-five thousand dollars.
It depends October first.
So, I actually spoke with our insurance agent today, and we sat in the renewal process.
This is a little greenery that they've restored.
Yeah.
And this is where we go. So are you specifically asking for something tonight, or is it just an informational?
So, um, you know.
Are they that close to you?
We wanted to update you guys on the.
I know, well, where?
Incomplete since September twenty nineteen.
That's the flea market.
So, that is the schedule that we plan.
You mark it up.
We would also.
Cross from, um. I'm sorry, just trying to get the location.
We would also like some sort of resolution or plan as far as the board's concerned as signing off on areas that are vegetated, whether it's the agent, you know, he's out there to approve areas to be restored, I don't know if he is an agent that would, you know, say that this area has been restored and is outside the purview of the bond.
I'm happy to do that and then report back to the board, however you want to do it.
Yeah, is that okay?
The stuff that they've done to date with the side slopes and the paper mill sludge is, it's coming up great, you know?
It's really.
Good. Glad to hear that, especially in this weather.
It's the best restoration project, I think, in town.
Oh, really? Huh. Congratulations. Have to give a course on it.
Yeah, we have, we have material coming in currently that we're mixing and getting ready for this fall.
Okay. Excellent.
Restoration. So, you know, with Bill being, having the authority to dispose of areas that are done, we're not looking for a reduction in the bond until, which it's over, complete the whole site.
Okay.
You know, I guess at that point, the bond becomes.
So, so ju- just to get the process down, what I would suggest is you submit a formal letter to the board asking me to sign off on it, and then I'll issue a letter back signing off on it, basically.
As the area.
Yeah. Yeah, that makes sense.
Make sense.
Do you want to vote on that, Bill? Is I just?
Yeah, I'd like to vote on that.
Okay. So authorize, I'll make a mo.
Is the vote going to encompass the fact that once the area is signed off on by Mr. Kandif, we can stockpile in that area again?
Okay.
Yeah. All right. So we want to make a motion?
I'm thinking it's two parts, right? I'll make a motion to authorize Bill to review the site location for four seventy Northeast Maine to sign off on the completed phases designated areas.
Motion.
As well as allow stockpile.
As well as allow stockpile. I don't think we have to do that.
Once an area is authorized.
Authorized.
Through me, I'll report back to the board.
Yep.
This is all part of the motion.
That's it. None of that was authorized.
Back to the board.
Yep.
And that will, that will authorize them to use those restored areas as they see.
So, yeah, once we sign off.
That's the motion?
That's the motion.
And seconded by, made by Les, seconded by Tracy. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Les Stevens, aye.
Mike Arco, aye.
Aaron Sokrat, aye.
Jake Schulzberg, aye.
Tracy Sharky, aye.
Motion carries. All right.
Yep.
All set. Thank you, guys. Thanks, guys.
Yep. Let's get the areas signed off before we stockpile.
All right.
I guess they could anyway.
ASD Wollam Mass Solar, decommissioning surety, possible vote.
Who we got? Is he online? There he is. I think he's online, Bill.
Yeah, there's actually two ASD. I don't know if he's online.
Uh, I see him just on the camera. He's waving this around. Jumping down.
Yeah, there is two. Okay, we have two things.
Signed decision, too.
I'm going to recuse myself from this.
You recusing yourself?
Discussion, yeah.
I have a question, just educate me, why, we have people here that are, why are we waiting? They didn't get on the agenda till this afternoon. These people are on the agenda way ahead of them, so. Well, we have people also that are here. That have been on for weeks. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Do we want to turn it over to Ian?
Yeah, so I'm going to recuse myself.
Yeah, let's work and show that Tracy is recusing herself. Okay, so we're doing, uh. Number two and number seven. Number two and number seven, yep. Okay. So, in your pa, Evan, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll try to summarize this quickly.
Yep.
So in your packet, we have, you might recall a few, probably a month or two ago, we had voted to rescind the approval of the subdivision for Lakeview Estates. The decision is in your to-be-signed folder, so we're, I ran it by town council, town council agrees with the format, so you just need that signed, and then I'll send that off to the applicant.
Okay.
That's number one. Number two, with regard to the decommissioning surety, what I'm going to ask is that the board authorize me to work with the applicant to finalize that. Once we finalize that, have the chairman sign it. Okay, Boyd, any questions? Need a motion to have me do that, Bill? I think Evan wants to speak with that.
Yep.
Who does?
Evan, the applicant.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah.
I would just add to that, condition eighteen of our permit also stipulates that we need a stormwater management erosion, erosion response surety to be posted. I don't think we've spoken about that since we had the permit, and it may be an appendix in the conditions that snuck its way in there, but I would ask that the board also authorize Bill to address that as well and lump it into the decommissioning bond if you guys think that is appropriate. So I won't have to come back to you guys and do this again for a different surety.
I agree with that. That's great. Yep, that'd be great. Okay. Anything else?
And then the only other small housekeeping item, I had my guys wanted me to ask you if it would be an administrative change on our plan set, the modules are currently allowed no closer than ten feet to the outside road that runs around the perimeter of the site. We wanted to ask the planning board if they considered it a de minimis change to allow those to be within two or three feet instead of ten.
What?
Otherwise.
On that matter, what I would recommend to the board is that we get that formal request in writing, so that we can have a paper trail to that end.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I'll get that for your next meeting.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else? I think that's it. All set, Evan?
Good to go, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Evan. All right, so you need a vote for me to sign off on? Yes. Okay, somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize Bill to, oh, the chairman, to sign off on the decommissioning surety for, uh.
Decommission and erosion.
And erosion control surety.
Second. For me by Les, seconded by Mike. Any further discussion? All to be heard. Roll call.
Les Stevens, aye.
Mike Arco, aye.
Aaron Sokrat, aye.
Jake Schulzberg, aye.
Tracy, recused?
Upstain, or recused, yeah, sorry.
Just to remind you, there is a decision in, in the to-be-signed folder for this. Okay. Dear Crossing. Woodland Drive Turnaround in mailbox, City One B Woodland Road, possible vote.
Dear Crossing.
Dear Crossing. We have Tim Neelen here. Hey, Tim.
Good evening, Tim Neelen, Dear Crossing Development, eighty-seven Elm Street, Hopkinton. Our request deals with that section of Woodland Road to the south of the intersection with Old Farm. As the board, if they recall, that we're seeking town acceptance of that portion of Woodland Road to the north of Old Farm to South Street.
So this part of.
This request.
I'm sorry, Tim, I'm just highlighting, if you guys see my mouse moving around, that part is the part he's referencing, is the, referencing that he's going to town meeting to get accepted as a public way.
Okay.
Go ahead.
This request deals with, as I said, the, that a portion of Woodland Road to the south. What we're asking the board is for permission to install a, a temporary turnaround at approximately Station Thirty-five plus fifty. Now, this area of Woodland Road already has pavement. It's not a bonded portion of the road, but it is paved for about a hundred feet beyond where we're seeking permission to install this temporary turnaround. The turnaround is.
Okay, go ahead.
The turnaround would be in the right of way, and the wider portion would be on our land on which, what is what, Twenty-Second? And the idea is that the approval of this turnaround would make it an acceptable temporary dead end in order to allow us to seek building permits for lot twenty-one and twenty-nine, both of which are just, just before the circle.
Thank you, Tim. So, if I could add, Tim, so if you look at the plan that's on the screen, this is the intersection of Woodland and Old Farm. This is where currently the phase ends.
Yep.
That's where the mailbox unit is, that's this part here.
Yep, correct.
This part of Woodland is, as Tim indicated, currently not bonded, so we don't have lot releases for this whole phase, phase six. What Tim is proposing, that we sub, sub, break phase six into two parts, six A and six B.
Yep.
Six A is really only two lots. This last lot would not be included as part of six A, because as you can see, the turnaround, which is requested from the fire chief.
Yep.
Is over this septic system.
Okay.
Obviously, they couldn't put the septic system in, so therefore it's a moot point on releasing that lot.
Okay. So, question to Bill, to the chair. So, um, it's past the old farm town road, then they've got two drainage retention ponds there, and then it goes, it's still all paved.
One.
Oh, one, and one on the, on the left side, I think it is.
Yep.
One on the left. And then are they proposing the turnaround past that?
Yes, so you.
Detention pond.
If you go up Woodland.
Yep.
And you come to the Old Farm Road intersection.
On the right.
It's still paved, but that's currently where they're seeking, number one, road acceptance at this annual town meeting.
Correct.
And number two, they, they've not, even though they've constructed some of the binder.
Yes.
They've not, the lots have not been released.
Correct.
So this is simply to provide a turnaround so they could get two lot releases as part of phase six A.
Yeah, I'm just asking where the turnaround's going to be, if it's proposed past the retention pond that's currently there?
Yes. Uh, no, right before. So, so if you look.
Okay.
I'll go on to the next sheet, which is a continuation of this sheet.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So here, here is the lot right here.
Yeah, I did too. Yeah, I'm, I'm familiar with it. I think they have room both before and after. They, they clear out the old, and I think the turnaround's going to be on the right side, left side, Bill?
Uh, the turnaround's going to be, yeah, it's going to be a Q-type turnaround, so you go to the right and then turnaround.
Correct, okay. Yeah, glad you drove down there too, Ernie. Because, you know, they're, they're bringing it along and stuff like that.
It's a nice project.
The turnaround would be in the right-of-way, and the wider portion would be on our land on which was what, 27? And the idea is that the approval of this turnaround would make it an acceptable temporary dead-end in order to allow us to seek building permits for lots 21 and 29, both of which are just before the circle.
Thank you, Tim. If I could add, Tim, so if you look at the plan that's on the screen, this is the intersection of Woodland and Old Farm. This is where currently the phase ends. That's where the mailbox unit is, that's this part here.
Yep, correct.
This part of Woodland is, as Tim indicated, currently not bonded, so we don't have lot releases for this whole phase, Phase 6. What Tim is proposing that we sub-break Phase 6 into two parts, 6A and 6B. 6A is really only two lots. This last lot would not be included as part of 6A because, as you can see, the turnaround, which is requested from the fire chief, is over this septic system. Obviously, they couldn't put the septic system in, so therefore, a moot point on releasing that lot.
Okay. This is a question to Bill, to the Chair. So it's past the Old Farm Town Road, then they've got two drainage retention ponds there, and then it goes, it's still all paved.
One.
Oh, one, and one on the left side, I think it is. One on the left. And then are they proposing the turnaround past that?
Yes, so you'll...
Detention pond.
If you go up Woodland, and you come to the Old Farm Road intersection...
On the right.
It's still paved, but that's currently where they're seeking, number one, road acceptance at this annual town meeting.
Correct.
And number two, they, they've not, even though they've constructed some of the binder, they've not, the lots have not been released.
Correct.
So this is simply to provide a turnaround so they could get two lot releases as part of Phase 6A.
Yeah, I'm just asking where the turnaround's gonna be, if it's proposed past the retention pond that's currently there?
Yes. No, right before. So if you look, I'll go on to the next sheet, which is a continuation of this sheet.
I just took a right turn.
So here is the lot, right here.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it. I think they have room both before and after. They clear out the old, and I think the turnaround's gonna be on the right side, left side, Bill?
The turnaround's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be a Q-type turnaround, so if you go to the right and then turnaround.
Correct, okay. Yeah, glad you drove down there, Tony, because, you know, they're bringing it along and stuff like that.
It's a nice project.
Yeah, it's coming along.
Okay, any questions, comments?
No, it's pretty standard.
So it looks like there's still 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 lots in Phase 6 as part of Phase 6B.
They go down there.
To the end of the cul-de-sac.
Yep. Okay. Any questions from the audience?
Okay. Anybody on the board have any questions?
Nope.
Anybody else have any questions?
Good.
I have some comments and questions.
Can you recognize, please, your name and address?
My name is Rebecca Amelia, and I live at 81 Old Farm Road. My house has been there for 15 years. My house is shown on the upper part of that plan, right in the center. I had no idea that they were proposing to build in this next phase. They should absolutely not be allowed to build anything without a bond. That's a, that's a street. There's a lot of liability to that. That's absolutely ridiculous that he's even asking that. Secondly, we've been living with this public mailbox for Woodland Road in front of our house. Before he turns Woodland Road into a public road, that mailbox should be removed. I own 200 feet of frontage. You can't see it on that plan because it's cut off, but my house is on Old Farm Road. It's been there for 15 years. I'm not part of his community, and yet the mailbox for over 20 house lots on Woodland Road was placed in front of my house. It's been there. I own a tiny little piece, a tiny little piece of my lot that you can see on that plan. That's where the mailbox was placed. I own 200 feet on Old Farm. My house is on Old Farm. I have my own mailbox.
It's in the corner.
I've had my own private mailbox that's been there for 15 years. This developer chose to put his public mailbox in front of my house. It should be at the throat of South Street by Woodland Road. There's like 500 feet of vacant land at the throat there with the sidewalk. All the people that live on that street have to drive that way and go past it every day anyway to get out to the main road. As it is, people drive, have to drive to the front of my house to get their mail. It sounds like it's no big deal until you're living there, and people are coming at 7:30 in the morning on Sunday to get their Amazon packages, and I absolutely do not want a turnaround anywhere near my property. As it is, every truck, every landscaping truck that comes to the neighborhood, and every trash truck, which there are trash trucks from at least five or six different companies that come to our neighborhood on a regular basis, and there's many landscapers that come every day as well, they all come down to the end there to turn around. This would increase that problem. I've never been compensated by this developer in any way, and it's impacted my property He also doesn't maintain the area around it. There's all sand from the plow, and that's left there, and it's built up, built up. There's weeds about this tall around it right now. I've been responsible for maintaining the whole area around it, which is not landscaped in any way. The mailbox should be near the throat of South Street. I've spoken to George, the postmaster in Douglas, about it, and he said, now that it's gonna become a public street, he would also prefer it to be located near South Street so that way the postmen can just pull in quickly from South Street and give the mail in one shot coming in from the other direction rather than coming down from Old Farm and that way, turning around and coming back around.
The placement of the mailboxes is at the discretion of the post office and the postmaster. So the previous postmaster probably was...
Yeah, I would ask that, Tim chime in, he probably has a better memory because we've had so many of these, but it was around this timeframe that we were approached by the post office to have a central mailbox unit, which is why Old Farm Road does not have them, but Woodland does. And my recollection, but Tim, this is why I'm asking Tim for the confirmation, at the time, the developer worked with the post office at the time, and that's the agreement that they presented to the planning board at the time, so...
At the time, there were only a handful of houses now, though. Now there's a lot more, and it wasn't a proper placement to begin with.
Maybe, maybe Tim's willing to relocate it? I don't know.
Yeah, we can certainly discuss that issue. I mean, not if it's gonna become a town road, I would think that maybe that's probably what will happen, it will get moved down to the South Street end, so they'd be a quick start for them.
There's also some other things like...
So why don't we take these one at a time? So, so, Tim, would you be willing to relocate the mailboxes?
We actually, Jack Nealon from my office inquired of the post office this week, and the person that he spoke to, and I was told it was the postmaster, a woman, said that they selected that location, they feel it's the best location, and that I had no authority or power to move it. I did not select that location initially, and I did not install it. That was totally done by the, by the post office.
Yeah, designated the space.
I didn't ask them to put it there. They selected.
I spoke to them about it recently.
We'd be willing to move it, but I told them it's not our, it's not within our purview or our authority, and the post office feels that's the best location within the development.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
I believe the woman postmaster left a long time ago. I spoke recently to the postmaster.
Yeah, well, we'll continue the discussion and see what the postmaster thinks.
He's a developer.
Oh, I don't know. I never heard the name.
Yep. So I don't think the, where it's located right now is in the what, the right-of-way?
It's in the right-of-way.
There's also no sidewalk to it, Tim. The sidewalk ends before the mailbox.
That's correct.
If the mailbox were relocated to the area near the throat of, where the throat of Woodland by South Street, the sidewalk extends all the way down to South Street there. There's, it's wide, every car that lives there has to go in and out that way anyway, so there'd be no need for the turnaround. The neighbors that live there are not happy with the location of it either.
He suggested he did.
It shouldn't be from my house, it doesn't service me.
It's up to the post office.
Okay, thank you.
There's plenty houses on that road.
Okay.
Completely fronted.
We'll see what we can do about the mailboxes. Do you have, what's your next comment?
So, so, if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
So, I mean, I think logically, I agree, it makes sense to be closer to South Street. If the logic is, well, I was gonna say, if the logic is they wanna cut down the road miles, but they've got, they've got individual mailboxes on Old Farm anyway, so they're going that way anyway.
Right.
It's a different, the South Street mail guy is a different carrier, it's a different group.
Bill, one of the things, if we're gonna look into it or whatever, Sleepy Hollow has a designated mail stop area, you know? We could look at how far that is into the subdivision there.
It's probably 50 to 100 feet.
And, yeah, so...
Here regardless of where it goes, it should be right from my house. I'm not part of that community, and it doesn't service me.
We hear that.
Thank you. We're good.
Okay, so can I just address her first comment?
Sure.
We do have surety for Phase 6. Currently, it's in the form of a no-build covenant. The applicant's only here tonight to ask permission to subdivide, so to speak, or break into smaller pieces, Phase 6. So when, when he's here to ask the board, hey, is this okay with you if we do this? And then if the board says yes, they will post cash surety, and lots will get released when they do that, and then we'll move forward with the project.
All right.
And we've done this similar with other developers, so it's nothing new, where they've done charity with cash and they've changed, changed the phase plan. That's good.
Well, there's another problem with what's going on there, though, is, again, building with large rock boulders, loose rock boulders, I think you, nothing should be released. You should have a bond, that's standard operating procedure.
So, so he does have a bond, are we talking Woodland Road?
He has a bond for building a street, or a bond for what?
We have surety for the road between South Street and Old Farm Road.
A temporary road is not a road.
No. I wanna be clear, I'm talking about Phase, what, 3, 4, and 5, not Phase 6.
Correct.
So 3, 4, and 5 are between South Street and Old Farm. So there, we went through on a punch list and generated, myself, John Vernon...
Yeah, John was out there.
Went through on a walkthrough, we generated a punch list, we're in the process of addressing that. But, but we do have cash surety to fix things at the road if they don't follow through on it.
Yep.
And, you know, they are seeking road acceptance for 3, 4, and 5 town meeting. They're in the process. If you haven't been notified already, I'm sure you're gonna get a mailing on a public hearing for that with the selectmen, and maybe it's a public meeting, Tim, I'm not sure.
When is that meeting?
I don't know the date. Tim, do you know the date for that meeting?
I believe it's, I believe it's August 25th.
August 25th.
Yep.
Selectment's meeting.
Selectment meeting, yep.
And so, you know, he's proceeding on that. This is simply the next phase, it's only two lots. It's procedurally correct.
Yeah, 100%. I'm good with it. Yeah, and I think it came before us regarding the road acceptance almost a year ago plus.
They did.
Yeah, 'cause I remember John going out there.
Went out last fall for a punch list, didn't get it, so it got bumped.
Yep. And the turnaround was also, was this reviewed by someone from the town as well? The turnaround discussion?
The only comment I have on the turnaround is, any motion you make approving this would be pending the Board of Health's review of the drawing.
Yep.
Because, as I indicated, it is located partially over a septic sys, proposed septic system.
Proposed.
I'm sure it's probably okay because by the time they get that lot released, they'll have to take the pavement out, but I just wanna make sure the Board of Health is aware of it and they're okay with it.
The, just clarification through the Chair and the Bill, the proposed turnaround that they're doing, it's gonna be all paved?
Yes.
Okay. Just some of them in the past have been dirt and, or crushed down, so thank you.
No, the chief, the fire chief and I are working together and getting a basic set of parameters.
Okay, excellent. I'm good.
Anybody else on the board have any comments?
I want to see the plan of this.
Okay. Ma'am, do you have any more questions?
Yeah, I think it's a nuisance to have a, a public turnaround next to my property. Every truck that comes to the neighborhood is gonna be down there and turning around. It shouldn't be allowed. There's no such thing as a temporary...
The other thing, I'm sorry. Here you go.
It shouldn't be allowed.
I wanna also ask, Tim, you know, we, we're gonna need a temporary construction easement for the turnaround for our use also. Of course, that'd be temporary.
Yes.
So we, do we tie that to any, any future releases or prior to the release?
No, that, that'll come, this is in concept. If you, you're okay with this, I don't see a problem with it from my perspective with those two things.
Correct. The temporary easement.
The turnaround easement, and the Board of Health, okay.
Yep, makes sense.
If that happened, let me say, Board of Health.
Review.
Yeah.
The review, right?
I just have a quick question, are you 42? What number are you?
I'm 81.
81, Woodland.
Trying to find. See all the mailboxes here. I'm in Google Earth and on the road. Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I'm good.
Why don't I do that, too?
Okay.
Well, unless I drive up there, it's a septic.
Pretty cut and dry.
Yeah, but you can't sit in the property lines.
Did you have any other questions?
No, I don't at this time, Bill, no, thank you.
Okay. Any motion for us, Bill?
Yeah, Tim, you wanna vote? Is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay. That's 42.
I'll make, you wanna do it? I'll make a motion to allow Deer Crossing Woodland Drive to split Phase 6 into Phase 6A and 6B for the release of the two lots.
You're not releasing the lots yet.
Not yet, later.
Temporary turnaround.
Temporary turnaround.
Construct a temporary turnaround, yeah. Hi, motion's been made.
Second.
Motion made by Les, second by Mike. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote.
Leslie Mize.
Mike Arco, aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye. Jake Schultzberg, aye.
Tracy Sharky, aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right. Thank you, Tim. Anything else, Tim?
Thank you.
Is that gonna approve?
Nope, well, that's it, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Can we jump to number 6?
Number 6, yeah.
6.
Douglas Renewables LLC, 170 West Street.
Bill, can we explain?
Possible vote.
Ernie, can we explain what happened to them?
Just now.
They're saying they're confused. It wasn't the mailbox, we did not address the mailbox. The mailbox was not addressed. Correct. That's something we want, you know? Do you have a question?
Yeah, I have opposition to the turnaround, I have a lot of concerns, and you sit there and you just vote.
Approved it all.
It's not even, we have planning regulations. Point to me in the planning regulations where that's allowed. Point to me in the regulations where this turnaround complies with planning board regulations. Are you a planning board, or is this like a fantasy? It's ridiculous. Show me in the planning laws where that's allowed, where a temporary turnaround is allowed. This impacts my property value. I don't know how you can sit here and la-la land and not even address my concerns.
It's like, do you even say?
Do I need a lawyer, do I need to sue you? You cannot just fly in the seat of your pants.
You wanna address it, Bill, or do you want me to?
Sure, I'm happy to. So subdivisions in our regulations, as well as the decision for this subdivision and all subdivisions, allow the developer to phase the subdivision with the board's approval or authorization. This is what we're here for tonight on this project, is to listen to the applicant's request to phase this section of the project and then authorize it or not authorize it. The...
You have told me in the past, Bill, the rest of that street does not comply with regulations and that it could not be built until it did. Now what you did tonight is the exact opposite of that.
I would not have said that.
The planning, you have to go by your planning regulations. They don't allow this.
So, Ernie, through the Chair. The applicant who came before us, the developer, had an approved phase-by-phase-by-phase plan. He got to Phase 6, and he was asking to split it into 6A and 6B. We've done that in the past for other developers. We do require them to have a turnaround instead of just a street that goes nowhere. We do ask them to have a turnaround for the aspect of safety and vehicles, and some, in some cases, they are paved, in some cases, they are crushed down. And so there's no difference in what we've approved prior to other developers than what we've done here. Regarding the mailbox, that's an ongoing item which the developer's willing to work with the postmaster and has reached out to them as well as you. It is in the subdivision plan, where the location was designated by the postmaster at that time. Should it be moved, it's up to where the postmaster wants it.
I've never even seen the subdivision plan, and I don't know about it.
It, subdivision plans...
They're available in my office.
The town records.
Anybody can come see it.
Yep. And in some cases, they are, in some cases, they are online at the registry deeds.
Well, only the line work is the property line.
Correct.
I was in town last week.
So the more, the more detailed plan is available in the planning office, and if you email Bill, he can set up a time for you to come in to review it. So, you know, it's by, by appointment.
It doesn't comply with any regulations.
Well, it's what we've, what we've done in the past with every...
It doesn't mean it's right.
Well, it's, it's what's common.
Nothing we've done tonight is not in the scope of our regulations. So you can, you can keep saying that it's not, but it is.
Pull the regulations out right now and show me the, the section that allows that.
Ooh, why don't we get back to her with the lawyer, and we'll figure out and figure the section and have a clarity from our attorney. That's all.
If she wants to do that, that's fine. Nothing we're doing tonight is out of the scope of our regulations.
But you can't just tell someone to pull it out tonight and start to have a big discourse over it. I mean, we get it, it's a safer way of having a dead end that just dead ends versus...
The power...
It's not, it's supposed to be built upon, though, until the road is there. Every community, you build the road first. You don't build the house lots and stick a, a temporary turnaround next to somebody's property and allow a developer to do that. As it is right now, he's still building these giant walls out of loose boulders, and there's kids walking by it. I don't understand what is going on. I don't understand how that...
That's a safety, that's a safety issue, that's...
I've driven down there. I've driven down there, so has Ernie, has Mar.
Yeah.
What's the height? The septic system.
I've never seen anything.
What she's referring to is something we're dealing with. It's not something that the developer built, it's something that he sold one of the lots that the builder did.
The homeowner is probably doing, yeah.
And they encroached in the right of...
No, it's not, it's his lot.
It's a new lot. And they encroached in the right-of-way. We've identified it, and we're gonna rectify it.
Fair enough. And, and, yep. All right. Thank you.
So, I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm...
So we're on top of that wall.
Completely, the wall issue is, is going to be addressed prior to town meeting.
Okay, excellent.
So we are working on that.
Okay.
I need to finish addressing the issue concerning the road over to a public road.
So, so, just, just one last thing we need to do, because I don't want this to go on.
Yep.
The, the developer did construct the binder, of course, of paving, the infrastructure, the stormwater, the detention basin, he planted Lomond seed in the areas around the detention basin, which are all in this phase, okay? phase, okay? So the binder is essentially there with the exception of a small portion of the turnaround that he's looking to construct. And our regulations, as well as state law, allow only binder, of course, of paving for lots to be released. So it's fully consistent with what the statute and our regulations and our decision says for this project. Because the final course will get torn up and that's why you don't, you just have the binder for all the construction.
You don't want the final course.
Yeah.
Right, it'll get ruined, you know?
Let's move forward.
It's par for the course, whatever municipality, you know?
You can start building the street when you haven't approved it.
Yeah.
It has to get to his property.
All right. So moving forward, six, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we're moving on.
So number six, Douglas Renewables. So why don't I let Julie speak to that?
She's on.
Is she on? Okay.
Hey, Julie, can you hear us?
Julie, can you hear us?
Hi, nice to see you guys. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Julie's coming here from Hawaii.
Really?
Yes.
Yes.
Take me back with you and you go.
I can see now, Ernie just doesn't want a postcard. He wants a plane ticket.
Okay, go ahead, Julie.
I definitely commend you guys for doing this. You guys are right on the curve on the technology here opposed to most towns, so great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just to talk about where we are, you know, we're wrapping up our full project financing and we never got an opportunity to execute the decommissioning bond. We'd worked with StanTech as a third party to come up with a quote for the decommissioning bond and we got very close to a final number. The only discrepancy there was StanTech wasn't taking into consideration salvage value, which is very atypical not to consider that in a decommissioning bond. Any entity that takes down the project at the end of its life will recycle the entirety of the system and will get a substantial payment for that. So, you know, we see that across the decommissioning bonds that we execute for towns for many projects. And, you know, I think the number right now is pretty fair. There's a contingency in there as well. So just looking to kind of finalize this agreement and get that in place. To date on the site, we've completed all the site work and we're not currently there. We're waiting for equipment delivery, which actually is going to happen early next week. And so you should expect about three, four trucks per day coming in, delivering equipment, and then hopefully six months from now will be completed with construction.
Excellent.
I would love to hear from the board if there are any issues to date, your take on how construction has been so far.
I haven't heard of any.
Just through the chair, the StanTech in this case is an independent?
Yes, they worked with us on developing the value of the surety. So I've worked on other projects and town council actually has advised that we don't consider that as part of our calculation, just because it's an uncertainty and the most conservative approach would be to not consider that. Of course, the board can at the applicant's request, but, you know, if you want documentation for that, and I'm happy to talk to Jay and get you something. And I don't know if you're willing to do this, Julie, but I think in order to move it along quicker, the board authorized me to work with the applicant and authorized the chair to sign on behalf of the board if we agree on the value and the form.
Okay.
That's okay, Julie?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anybody else have any questions?
I'm good with everything. That's it.
All right, we need a vote, Bill?
It's authorized.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to authorize Ernie to sign for the Douglas Renewal LLC, 170 West Street for the decommissioning estimate on behalf of the board.
And erosion control.
And erosion control.
Second.
Motion made by Les, seconded by Tracy. Any further discussion? All in favor? Roll call.
Les Stevens' eye.
Mike Reckel, I.
Aaron Sokrath, I.
Jake Schulzberg, I.
Tracy Sharky, I.
Motion carries. You can handle it.
And I've only heard good things about the project to answer her earlier question.
Yeah, that's, no, I haven't heard anything negative at all.
Nothing about the traffic issues. I haven't even heard anything.
And the crossing was very good.
Very good.
Yeah. All right, anything else, Julie?
Thank you guys very much. It's been a pleasure working with you. I look forward to being back soon, hopefully for something.
That sounds good.
She's stranded in Hawaii.
We want those cars.
Tough to be stranded in Hawaii.
Thank you, Julie. Yeah, good night.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right.
All right. Signed decision, BWC, Whiten Reservoir LLC, Blue Wave, Sold over 25 Oak Street.
Why don't we do the A and R now?
Okay. Oh, okay, that's good. All right.
I think, oh, wait, we've got some other people. We've got, I'm sorry, Whiten's Res, yeah, 4 and 5.
Oh, 4 and 5, they're on one.
Sorry.
You want to do those first? 4 and 5?
Yep.
All right, Whiten Reservoir Estates, update. Whiten Reservoir Estates, request for lot release, possible votes. Okay? Is somebody here for that, Bill?
Yes, Jennifer.
Can't hear you, Jennifer. Hold on.
I'm back.
Yeah, there you go. Excellent.
We've got North 12, but I'm not here. Jennifer Gallus, I represent NQOW in development and special permit with the town. They have been in construction for a couple of months now on two of the lots. Two of the properties have been completely developed. There was an occupancy certificate that was released on lot number three. Lot number two has been completed, but doesn't have an occupancy permit, which was sort of why we wanted to give you an update on the construction of the road, where we're at, and hopefully keep the project moving as expeditiously as the town will permit. We have done everything with the exception of completion of the road, which is the holdup on the issuing of the building permit. The issue comes, relates to COVID, over the year. There's a six to eight week delivery delay on the granite curving. It is, we're trying different vendors, we've put a couple of other calls out. It was originally six to eight weeks. That was about two and a half, three weeks ago, so we're now looking at about four, hopefully. But still going to try to get permission from the town to move a little bit faster than the delay is allowing us to. We've been trying to update, Bill. I know NQOW has engaged Andrews Engineering to submit updates on the progress, not only from the developer's point of view, but from the engineering standpoint, specifically as it relates to completion of the road. Most recently, they spaced out the sidewalk. That's the remaining component for the completion to get to the next step. So that's the update on the road and the program. The request for the release of that building permit comes, I believe there's a gentleman, Matthew Rannieri, on here. He has a contract for the purchase of that land and to obviously move forward until the occupancy department is released. So he wanted to just, I think, come on here. I don't know if he has anything to say or anything to offer, but wanted to just get some input into the board's perspective and what we can do to hopefully move ahead. Did you want anything, Matt?
Yeah, can you guys hear me? Can you hear me? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
So yes, thank you for your time, board. I just, I mean, I look forward to, my wife and I, Allison, we look forward to moving to the town of Douglas. We're very excited. I want to be part of the community there. We're kind of in a pickle right now, though, because the original plan was, the closing date was supposed to be on the 30th of July. Here we are on the 14th and still, oh, the 13th, I'm sorry, we're still kind of, it's up in the air, waiting for the occupancy, I guess, to get approved. The problem is with my wife and I is, we live in an apartment right now, so currently, literally, at the end of this month, we're going to be homeless with no place to live. I have a one-year-old son right now where, I mean, living in, we just don't have family who accommodate us and we both work remotely right now and we need the internet connection to be able to, to be able to continue to work and it's just, we literally have till the end of this month that we're not going to have a place to live. We have so much stuff and like, if this doesn't get approved, then we're not going to, we'll have to like rent a storage unit and it's just, it's just really hard for us right now. We're just hoping that we guys can come to a conclusion, approve the occupancy, so we can try to move in as soon as possible, at least by the end of this month, because we're going to be completely homeless with no place to live. And I have my wife and I care to raise my son, Owen. And yeah, so I just wanted to add, hopefully that this could get approved and the house is pretty much, it's done. It's just, I think the only roadblock is the, like Jennifer said, was the curves and I guess it's still on back order of delay. So all I'm asking is, if I'm hoping that this can get approved, where at least we can move into the end of the month or just, we're just really in a tough spot right now.
Jennifer, which lot is Mr. Rannieri seeking?
Oh, that's 4 Whiten Heights, I'm sorry.
Lot two on the plate.
So I signed off on lot three, correct?
Yes, correct.
So, so the board had released lots two and lots three.
Correct.
And as I indicated to the developer, when they were seeking occupancy, you know, when he comes in and seeks occupancy, I go through the checklist and I'm sure they crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is when they get to that point.
Correct.
So there's a number of things that need, were outstanding. I'm not hung up on some of the things, the sidewalk construction I'm a little flexible on, but the mailbox, the street signs, you know, and those are now installed. The mailbox, I think, I just got a photo from Bob today.
Okay.
At the mailbox. I'm sorry?
It was this morning, yes.
So I'm assuming it's adequate and acceptable to the post office. I don't know.
Okay.
And, you know, so if we get, the other thing I've been trying to get is a schedule from them. The schedules that have been provided to date have not been adhered to. I'm not getting calls for inspections when they do work.
Yeah.
So we'll go out to the site just to see what's going on and, or the schedule they gave me, I'll look at, hey, today it's supposed to be granite curbs or, you know, we're raising structures and I'll schedule my day around it and go out there and nobody will be on site. And I've not been contacted that the schedule's been changed. So the decision requires that advance notice be made to the town, you know, in writing 72 hours before an inspection is requested.
Yeah.
And, you know, for Mr. Rannieri's protection, we want to make sure that he's in a project that's going to continue and be solvent for the long period and not fail prematurely. So, you know, the role of the town is to look out for people like Mr. Rannieri and make sure the developer is doing their due diligence and communicating when they do encounter a problem so that, you know, we can work through it and come up with, you know, a reasonable way to address the issue. So, you know, I appreciate Mr. Rannieri's position. I also want to take this opportunity to point out that the developer really needs to communicate better and to make sure that things are on schedule, moving forward, and being done properly. So I didn't know, I knew generally they were looking to put the mailbox up. I didn't know when it was going up. I should have gotten notified that, hey, if I wanted to go inspect it, we're putting it up Tuesday and then I could go up and take a look. But that level of communication is not happening.
That has to change.
Yeah, and I was up there with, through the chair, you know, I mean, I was up there twice and to Bill's point, you know, a revised schedule so he can go out there and inspect and take a look at the progress of what's happening for that, that time, you know, such as the curbing going in and things like that are going to be key for us and for the community as if this road is going to be publicly accepted. So it's important for Bill to be out there and do those, you know, inspections and be on site during there. There was also the concerns regarding the backs of those drains.
Yes, and Jen, I don't know if you know this, but I did, after Les voiced this concern to me, I did put a request out to the developer to put up some barricades around the holes and the structures in the roadway. You know, if Mr. Rannieri and his family and his child are going to be driving that roadway, we don't want big openings in roadway.
Is that true?
Yep. Yeah, and we, you know, I understand the granite's delayed and stuff like that and Bill would understand that, too, but I think just some type of safety precaution is needed around those open catch basins and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, it shouldn't be open catch basins if we're going to have people living in the project.
Right. Yeah, so certain conditions need to be met to make sure that it's safe if they want to get an occupancy. And it's not just us withholding it because the work's not done, it's somebody's going to actually be in there, living their life with a one-year-old.
Yep.
Absolutely. So as a mother myself, I wholeheartedly am on board with that. And I'm sure, and I know that the gentleman at NQOW, the representatives are on the phone somewhere here, and I'm sure that they, as well, if the town could put forth a list of safety proposals, I mean, I think we can meet them in order to, just without seeking for them, I think we can do that in a very timely manner.
Jen, I'll just cut, jump in and say, that is not the role of the town. We do not want to take the liability of telling you what you need to do and noticing that there was a gap and someone got hurt because the town didn't tell you to do something. That burden falls on the developer. We're just pointing out that we see some safety issues that apparently need to be addressed.
Can I add, are they, I haven't entered the, to the site in quite some time. I mean, if we walk it, as a layperson, I'm going to, it's pretty obvious what needs to be done in this room.
Someone in control.
It's really the openings at the structures that were identified as a potential problem. And I did send an email out to the developer to put up barricades because we want people to be safe. If someone could drive out around there and literally drive over one of those structures where it's not backfilled and basically lose a tire.
I'll worry.
They're big holes. They're not small.
Yep.
And they're in the roadway.
Through the chair, you know, we've allowed, you know, lot releases and stuff like that, things to progress when the road's a little farther along than what this project is and where, and I get there's a shortage on granite, but I don't think we've, you know...
We wouldn't hold it up for that.
Correct.
Yeah, I wouldn't hold it up for that.
You know, we would just, you know, just like we do with all the projects, a letter would come in with an explanation, hey, we expect it's going to be six weeks out, you know, we're still seeking the occupancy. What we've done in the past is, we get a date that's submitted by the developer as to when he can comply and then that'll be the date we go by, you know? As long as there's some logic and reason, we're not unwilling to work with you on that.
Yeah, and it's...
It's the lack of communication that is the problem.
And the revised schedule, I think that Bill needs. It's really important.
Okay, I'll make sure that Andrew's survey is updating on a more regular basis. I think that they're overseeing the calendaring and the building and whatnot at everything at this point, so we'll make sure that that, I know I've sent emails from Jude, I don't know if I've taken off of any of them, but we'll make sure that that communication remains over.
When Jude communicates, I've been completely pleased with it. It's been fine.
Okay. All right. The second item that we wanted to talk about, I don't know if you want me to talk about both of them now or if you want to work on the, if there's anything part of, in regards to the occupancy on certificate, might be something that we go to the site and share up all of those loose ends and then make a request to you, Bill? Does that sound?
Jen, what I would want is a definitive schedule, not something that's subjective or wrong, so that we can kind of nail things down and make sure things move forward. And if things slip because of a reason, communicate it. Update the schedule, send a new one. Request inspections. I've not been asked to go up there this, since these houses have been constructed.
All right, we'll work on that. Make sure that that gets started.
I have a question. So like, I thought in certain towns and everything, so like, what, like, isn't the builder supposed to have an inspection, like, certain parts of, like, when a house is being built, like, inspect the foundation and then when the roof's done, inspect the roof?
inspect the foundation and then when the roof's un-inspected, like, I thought there was parts where an inspector was supposed to come in and check the house.
That's, that's building part.
Yeah, Mr. Rannieri, there's two, two, two things going on simultaneously. We're getting a road built and then the develop, the developers building on the individual lots. So these theoretically could be two different developers. In this case, it's not. But the house construction's under the building department entirely and they do regular inspections and you won't get an occupancy permit unless they're satisfied with the house construction. Now, that, your CEO purportedly could be held up because I'm not signing off on the road construction, okay? So they're kind of linked from that aspect, but if, if you don't build the road properly, things will come to a grinding halt on the project.
Well, so, Bill, to take up what you just said, there's two occupancies, is the based on your gray.
You signed off on one of the two buildings.
Correct, yes.
So where is the house in regards to, so Mr. Rannieri has to be concerned that the house gets its occupancy and that you then sign off on the other thing once they do all the work. So there's two different things going on. I only look.
I know what you look at.
So I have a subdivision, uh, decision that says, for example, no occupancy permits shall be issued until binder course of paving is approved, okay?
Mm-hmm.
And this is gonna be an issue for Jen's next conversation.
But just so everybody knows, there's also an occupancy for the house as well.
So how did lot three get approved?
No, no. He's talking.
Lot three, lot three was a show of good faith and it was made clear that we recognized the schedule was slipping. We didn't want to hold them up, so we authorized lot three as a show of good faith. The town was working with the developer so that they could catch up, in other words.
Okay, but I'm just confused with my, like, our contracts, 'cause I think our contract was before the lot three. And plus, I, I drive by there regularly too, and there's a drain, literally, there, there's a hole right in front of that lot three driveway where the drain is, I don't know if it's still now, but I don't know how that could get approved for an occupancy if there's a drain right in front of it, it's not even hiding, it's a hole with a drain, but it's not even hidden.
All I can tell you is they requested lot three before lot two and that's the one they chose and that, that's why we let them know. We, we signed it as a show of good faith and that's the language I, I used, expecting they were gonna continue on with the things that were outstanding.
So the only thing that we have on the table is keeping you on from.
Yeah, go ahead, Jen.
Go ahead, Jen.
Um, the only, the only thing that has told us off from that, that, and is sidewalks, there hasn't been anything else that's gone on.
And again, we're flexible on the sidewalks, Jen. I mean, I don't want to hang it up. I'm more focused on the critical issues.
Matt. Matt, I'm gonna turn off your mic.
Okay.
There we go.
All right.
So, so Jen, I'm mostly.
He turned it back on.
All right, let's do that again. All right, all right.
So Jen, um, I'm most concerned about the lack of communication and the schedule and the request for inspections.
Mm-hmm.
Those are my big issues, you know? Things are moving forward and the, the communication, the request for inspections is non-existent. And I'm not gonna continue authorizing releases with no communication or request for inspections or schedules.
So is there any possibility?
No, I'll talk to NTOW, I, I need to get an update on that. I, I thought the, the communication was usually up to date. Um, that's my, um, that's how I've been, been, being updated, so I will, uh, I'll make sure that that gets, gets done a little bit better. If there's work that's going on that's not being.
So, so I, I don't want another, they gave me a schedule. Jude gave me a schedule and Les can confirm this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I shared it with him and he went up a couple of times, I went up a couple of times, and things that were supposed to be occurring on particular days, nobody was on site doing anything. Um, nobody contacted us to let us know, hey, we're not gonna be on site, that, instead of that being done on Tuesday, it's gonna be done next Thursday. So I'm wasting my time going up to the site for an inspection and nothing's happening and I'm getting no communication on it. I've repeatedly contacted Bob and let him know this.
And through the chair, I think the other thing that has to be addressed is just some of the safety concerns up there at the site. So, that's it.
Thank you, Les.
All right. So is there a possibility that if they start to be diligent on the inspections and fix everything, give a very good schedule, that could we authorize Bill to sign off on that occupancy?
Sure.
Is there, is there, well, is there a method that we can, that it'll be okay before the next meeting?
I don't think Bill needs this.
I, I, I don't.
He's already got the.
I mean, from a technical perspective, sidewalks are not built, they're supposed to be built before any occupancies.
Correct, correct.
But we've had this conversation in the past where even though the regs require it, we, we work with developers on that issue.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so that's not my big issue.
Yep.
My big issue is the communication, the request for inspections and the schedule.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. But that's, my issue is that they're selling lots, knowing the work's not done, it's required for an occupancy permit to be granted in the first place.
Right.
Why are you doing that?
Well, you know why they're doing it.
I did see the purchase and sale agreement that, that it is conditioned on the, the occupancy, the occupancy certificate in, in the town's release. Um, so progress of the road was supposed to be for their lot.
But as the developer, you have a family here who, and you could say, well, it's his own problem to find another apartment. Just in good faith, would you try to work with them to make sure they're not out on the street in two weeks? I mean, there's some culpability.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Help this guy out.
Yep.
So, yeah, I think that the issue is the communication and if we hear from Bill that it's really diligent and that things are getting done there and that in inspections are being requested, then he's gonna be able to sign off. If there's still no activity, still incorrect scheduling, we're not gonna, we're not gonna bend on that.
And see.
And he shouldn't bend on that.
Yeah, so we stand with Bill and understand his.
It's nothing to do with us.
Yep.
It's the developer not sticking to a schedule, lack of communication, not doing the things that they're supposed to be doing in a timely manner.
Yep.
And then trying to sell the houses and getting everybody's hopes up and still not making progress.
So, Bill, are you willing to?
Jen's gonna get me a schedule tomorrow morning, it'll be in my inbox by the time I get in.
Mm-hmm.
That's right.
It's not on Bill, it's on the developer.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, and that's, yeah, it's nothing.
And Mr. Rannieri, I think in the meantime, you gotta cover your bases somehow because don't count on the two weeks like they're gonna do there, 'cause the communication's not been there and the pattern of inconsistency has been there. And, and we don't want to depend on this developer, so somehow, I feel for you, man, you know, so.
Okay.
All right, so Bill.
Thank you.
All right, Jen, get a schedule to Bill.
Yeah.
That punching out.
First thing.
Otherwise, some people are gonna be booing. Yeah, and accurate schedule.
Yeah.
And committed schedule.
Yeah.
And, and we can move forward.
Yep. Okay.
Well, well, I did say I'd get a key before you arrive, I, I do want to just connect with Andrew.
Of course.
Yep.
But, but I will have a key tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
One other thing, um, Jen, I don't know if you saw anything or you were involved with a certificate of compliance that was recorded, uh, two days ago. It was a certificate of compliance for the septic system for, I think, um, number six, lot three.
Oh, not from the.
So Starwood Realty, I think it was. Um, they, okay, so maybe it wasn't you, but somebody recorded a certificate of compliance for the septic and discharged the order of conditions. I believe we already gave the certificate of compliance for the order. They mislinked it in the registry.
Oh, no.
So they used the Title V certificate as the Concom certificate, so, um.
Got the forms mixed.
They.
Do you have any chance, know what the, the, the.
Book and page.
Do you have the book and page or anything in front of you?
No.
No.
Um, it was, it's.
It's, it's searchable.
So it searched by date, it was the 11th.
Yeah.
And it's under certificate.
Yeah.
And, um, I believe we already gave you our certificate of compliance. It's just not been recorded yet for the whole subdivision last year, I'm pretty sure.
I have not, until recently, I haven't been really a part of that, so I don't have a status update or knowledge of where we're at.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll, I'll find out. Thank you.
No problem. I was surprised myself when I was looking for another certificate.
Well, they made, they made the request a new certificate from you guys because that one wouldn't be accepted by the registry deeds.
No, we didn't.
No, no, 'cause it's expired, it's over the timeframe.
All right, so Bill, we're on board with that.
There's an extension.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm okay with it. Um, it sounds like a plan and Jen's gonna crack the whip.
All right, Jen?
Oh, item five?
I can reply.
Yeah, item five.
Letter in your packet.
Yep. Yep.
All right, go ahead.
All right, so as part of the, um, special development permit and the, and the amendment, there was, um, some contingencies associated with the release of, of building permits. Um, one of those was working with DHDD for an affordable housing unit. The application was submitted on June 24th. They gave us about a 60-day turnaround time, so we're expecting that on the 24th of this month to be finalized. Um, so we're looking for the release of three additional lots. Um, we've complied with that and the only other thing is the donation, which is where I started to get involved with Concom, is the donation of the five-acre parcel, um, to the town. Um, so that has started, that was presented to the Board of Conservation this week. Um, they, they sent out an email saying that excepted, we need to get this final deed put together. Um, I've got some edits, uh, and I need to get those over to Town Council for approval, but I think we're, we're getting close to that. Um, the next meeting, I believe, is the 24th of August.
No, September 10th, uh, August 10th.
Nope, no, September 10th.
September 10th.
Oh, Concom.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, Concom, oh, okay.
Is it the 25th?
It's the 24th.
It's the 24th.
Okay. Um, so hopefully we can, can get that complete, um, at that meeting as well. Um, those were the two outstanding conditions, I believe, as far as it relates to the release of the lot.
You okay with that, Tracy?
You all set with?
So, so the, there's a number of things.
Yeah.
There, there's, there's three decisions on the project.
Yeah.
Okay? We have the approved subdivision decision, we have an, uh, flexible development special permit, and we have an amendment to the flexible development special permit. Now, in the special permit documents, uh, there's a condition about, as Jen indicated, and it's, and it's reiterated in the amendment to the special permit, um, that they shall, no lots will be released.
Yeah.
Until the Concom approves.
Right.
The receipt, Concom Open Space Committee approves the receipt of the five-acre conservation parcel permit. Um, so.
That's the other thing too, yeah, that hasn't been done yet either.
That's it, yeah.
And, and, you know, I, I don't have the decision in front of me, but there were, I sent an email out the other day. Jen, were you on that email I sent out, which went over those few conditions on the occupancies?
Um, not 100% certain, no. I don't believe so.
It summarized all of the issues and that wasn't the only one, basically.
Yep, yep.
And this is, I'm sorry, release of lots, this is release of lots.
Correct, of, yeah, all lots, but.
Yeah, not occupancies.
Correct, release of lots.
I would say we have to hold off until conservation.
Bill, there was also concern regarding the bind.
Well, that's a good point, thank you for reminding me.
Binder.
So I sent out a photo, Jen, I don't know if you got this, I sent it to Bob and I copied the board. Um, so when, when they, when they cut out those structures in the road and the asphalt was lying adjacent to the road, um, I picked up a hunk of the asphalt and measured it and it was only, it was less than two inches, it was about one and three-quarter inches thick. Um, and in your packets, board members, I have a proposal from JTS to, to do coring on the road. The requirement was for two and a half inches of asphalt, so we're, we're, we're nearly an inch deficient, um, at that one location. So I'm recommending that the board authorize me and authorize JTC.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, JTS.
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 Yeah.
Um, to do some core testing, determine the thickness, and if there's a problem with the thickness, we can adjust the surety value for the road appropriately.
Yeah, it's JTC.
Oh, JTC.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to.
Did you, did you copy that, Jen?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think these, these cutouts were when they put the drainage basins in, so they were.
In the roadway.
In the roadway.
Yeah.
And that's what Bill grabbed, one of those pieces.
All right, Tracy, you wanna make that motion?
Yeah, to authorize Bill to use JTC to do the, um, coring.
I'll second that.
Okay, bye Tracy, seconded by Les. And through the discussion, roll call vote.
Less Steven's eye.
Mike Rickel eye.
Aaron Sokrath eye.
Jake Scholzberg eye.
Tracy Sharkey eye.
Right, motion carries.
Jen, I got that book and page for you.
Okay, got it.
Six, two, nine, 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 three, four, six, and it is lot three.
Okay, thank you.
So lot three has been sold and occupancy issued.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Um, they were trying to clear the order, I guess. And they stamped on.
And the registry took this?
Yes.
Accidentally.
And I called Ms. Registrar and she said there's nothing that she can do about it.
Yep.
All right, Bill, anything?
You emailed that to me, I can email it to her.
Oh.
Okay, Bill, anything else?
Did, um...
Go ahead, Jen.
Did you still tooth registrar?
Yes, yeah, you just have to amend it, and I, I want to say we already issued the certificate. But now this Title V certificate is linking.
Now, my recollection was there was a partial release?
Yes, yeah.
That the commission offered?
Just the road, I think it was.
Yeah, and, and the thing you may run into, Jen, if, if that was, partial release was never recorded with the registry, and it's over a year old, they may not accept it.
Oh, yeah, that's...
So you may have to go before the conservation and have them up a new one for the date, because the registry will not accept something that's, you know, older than three months.
Yeah, just plan for that for the 24th, just in case.
I'll do it on the agenda. Thank you. We'll definitely address that.
All right, anything further?
Anything else, Jen?
Anything else, Jen?
Well, do I, do we talk further about the lot releases? Or is it shot down because the five-acre parcel hasn't been accepted?
I think it's the combination of the five-acre parcel. I think there's other things in the decision that escaped me at the moment, but I sent an email to Bob going over those. And lastly, the, this issue on the surety value with regard to the pavement thickness, we need to confirm.
Okay. I will, I'll work on getting that, that schedule over to you tomorrow. An update, I will address that thickness with NDRW, and I think Benari's report would be empty, but we'll get this to the box as well.
Right.
And the, um, can I, um...
Jen, just, just, just so you know, usually when we have a deficiency such as that, we'll increase the surety and just add that difference to the top code.
Okay, I'll let them know. Have they, um, there's been no release of any part of the surety, right? No, no requests?
Correct, correct.
Okay, I will, so I'll get the updates. Can we, um, the request that we get put on to the next meeting for another update, and I'm sure I'll be requesting another release of lot, hopefully with more information.
Absolutely.
September 20th?
September 10th, yep. Mr. Reddery has a question.
Yep, sorry. Oh, he's on mute.
He's on mute.
Bill, can you unmute him?
Can I?
Yeah, hold on one sec.
You're muted, we can't...
There you go. Uh, his blue button. Gotta click over, over, scroll, scroll over. It's his name.
Up, down, left?
No, I don't know where he is.
He's, he's, he is on mute.
Right there, Matt.
There you go. Can we hear you? Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
There we go. Now we got you. Yeah, okay, we got you. Go ahead, sorry.
My, uh, my, my speaker's on my laptop on the drain, so I'm plugging in a plug-in, a speaker plug. I'm glad I attended this meeting because when, through my realtor speaking with the builder's realtor, I was under the assumption that this was the town that was holding up, not the builder. So I'm glad I attended, because I'm not happy with the builder right now, dragging his feet. Because according to Bill, he goes in for the, they go for the inspection, and nobody's there. Like, it's not even the town that's holding up, it ends up being the builder. So Jennifer, you need to talk to Bob, and like, I'm not like happy right now because we're like, like, you have a home to live in, but in 18 days, I'm not gonna have a home to live in. Like, this is unacceptable, like, doesn't he want money? Like, I don't get it. I don't get, I'm just, I'm not happy at all right now.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll blame you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, Mr. Benary.
Yeah.
Well, it works out for you, but it is not the town.
Yeah, it's outside our scope, but...
Thank you, guys.
No problem. Thanks for joining. Need a motion to continue these. Bill, do you want them?
No, we don't need one. It's just discussion.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you all.
All right, thank you, Jen. Good luck.
Talk to you tomorrow.
Bill, what do you want to take?
Lake Shore?
Lake Shore. Let's take them.
I think we're there.
All right, come on up, Dave.
Yep.
I don't know. Guess, guess he's gonna get a phone call.
Still here, a good location?
Yeah.
That's great location.
Yeah, thanks.
Perfect. Any size copies as well?
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks. Appreciate it. Excellent.
You guys two of them there?
Yeah, I know what they're doing.
You got one?
Yep, I gave him, yeah, I got a lot. You know what, he bought an extra one because Mike wasn't there.
I always like the highlighted lines.
Yeah.
All ready?
Do appreciate you highlighting.
That's a true statement.
It does. It makes our lives a little easier.
Yeah, yeah, I figured it might be helpful. So if you recall, we were in here about a month ago, and Mr. Cahill is, he owns the property all within green here. He'd like to divide it into four buildable lots and one non-budible parcel. Lot 1, Lot 2, Lot 3, Lot 4, and the non-budible parcel will be right here. So the new property line will be yellow lots. And so there was, there was discussion about the adequacy of the roadway. There's some steep slopes on the roadway, it's a gravel roadway. And there was an issue about the width of the roadway. So Mr. Cahill had the road widened, which widened substantially. As a matter of fact, I had to reconfigure the roadway to make sure that I kept it within the 20-foot bounds of the roadways, for, for the most part, because it had been widened so much. So hopefully that satisfies the board's requirement. Also, other things, we have a turnaround here. If you recall, we were discussing that last meeting, that would be the turnaround for emergency vehicles. And so we're hoping that that meets board's approval. Also, the, these two lots here, they're using existing access. This isn't going to be a lot. These two lots, the slopes in here, while it grades downhill, it doesn't really slope off the road too much. So, so in terms of access to the buildable portions of these two lots, I'm sure you don't have a problem.
So the turnaround's gonna be, is that an easement on that property?
That's gonna be an easement, yeah. And the easement has already been drawn up.
And Town Council reviewed it, and they're good with it.
Okay, good. All right.
The only thing, Fire, can you point out that last note that you added and talk about that? Okay, note 9, uh, note 9 of the only section, the, the only section of Lake Shore Drive being considered for the purpose of A and R endorsement is a section between Westerly property boundary line of Parcel A, and that section of Lake Shore Drive located in the eastern boundary of the proposed turnaround easement on Lot 4. This is approximately 1,050 feet. So in other words, the only area that the board is considering in terms of endorsement and adequacy of the roadway is from here to here. And the reason is because we got emails in your packets from the Highway Superintendent and the Fire Chief indicating that that section beyond the turnaround area was concerning for them. Right, makes sense.
Correct.
So would that be maintained as a private way down that end? Yes. Right.
So past, past there will be a private way, okay?
Well, all of it's private.
All of it's a private way.
All, all the town will be doing is plowing and sanding like we always have to.
To that point, there.
To that point, yeah.
Same point.
We're not going anywhere.
ICB ending up in the lake.
Correct. Correct, yeah.
Because there's still, what, three homes past that turnaround?
Well, there's, I don't know if they're permanent homes, there's, there's summer homes, but...
You know how seasonals become permanent quick?
Will those people be complaining that they're not sanded and plowed?
Seasonals become permanent.
I was not gonna be dealt with.
You know what I mean?
Summer shafts.
Right now, but they could be rebuilt.
Well, maybe this one, but I know that's...
I, you know what I mean?
Who's problem?
The, the, the maintenance of the roadway down here, that, that part isn't going to change from the way it is right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that's being considered as part of the A and R, right? So the, the roadway frontage is forming those two lots, right? Or is there extra, extra frontage? So the note, how does the notes do anything?
So, so the, it, it prevents them really from coming back and subdividing this unless they improve this section of the road.
Oh, okay, all right.
That's the purpose of it. But if it can't be serviced, then it's not... Because that was not improved
Okay.
as part of the work that Dave did.
And so any, you know, should one of those seasonal camps become year-round, and it's basically treated, it's treated as a driveway?
Right.
Right, it's treated as, for all purposes, as a driveway, not as a, as, not as a roadway. So the town's responsibility is up to the turnaround, which...
And that's what that note, notice is asking, so that it becomes part of the A and R.
Yeah, just for clarification, so...
When they start screaming five years from now that I can't get my driveway...
Right.
Yeah, well, no, because I, I get that they're seasonal now, but we've seen places that... Turn.
Then they can come back and do this.
Besides from that, I'll...
Oh, no, no, yeah.
Good. Point out the couple of steeper areas, if you don't mind, Fire.
A few.
There are a couple of steep areas here, right here. There's steep sections, 14.7% grade. And down here past the house, there's a 13% grade.
Yeah.
It's, it's still steep here, but it's, it's less so. By the time here, when you get that here, it's flat. And most of it between here and here is like a 7-8% grade.
What, what's the width now of that current private way now with the improvements?
The width of the gravel is, it's anywhere between 18 and 20 feet.
Okay.
A little more, if you say.
Yeah, no, it's, it's cleaned up a lot, I mean, I don't know.
It was going as quick. From what was the width before? I think it was like 10 to 12 feet. Yeah, so...
Yeah.
Widen quite a bit.
Yeah, yeah.
So fuck a job.
Okay, so I'm on a private way, and I need a lot of material at the end of the season. Because it's gravel, you know, it's just like, hard pack. So you guys, that's a long, you know, we're about short of road. By the time the plows go down, there weren't any, there's gonna be piles of gravel, you know, with snow.
In the turnaround...
You crushed concrete, didn't you?
Crushed regrind?
The heckle stuff, it's... The heckle stuff.
Oh, okay, yeah, that...
It's crushed, it's ledge, no sanding, just ledge filings.
Yeah.
It binds up like concrete.
Yeah, it binds up pretty well.
Stuff I put down three and a half years ago.
It's still there.
I just filled it in the other day.
What's it called, heckle?
You should get some of that.
It's Hilt.
Yeah.
I get the best stuff from the...
Yeah, we're not using sand anymore either. We're using the tar.
Nah, I can't use it.
It's a tar regrind?
Yeah, regrind.
And that stuff starts...
It's crushed up massive ledge and all the filings getting filled aboard.
Like a, like a stone dust, yeah.
It's incredible stuff.
Okay.
Okay, so, any other questions?
No, I'm good.
All right, Boyd?
Make a motion to endorse the A and R plan for Deben and Janice Cahill, 55, 56 Lake Shore Drive.
I'll second.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Jake. Hey, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Les Stevens' eye.
Mike Greco-eye.
Aaron Sokrath-eye.
Jake Schultzberg-eye.
Tracy Sharkey-eye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I just like, I just want to take you guys.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Last one was yesterday.
Glad we could get you in.
Yeah.
Try to put this together, so...
Save it for next time. You owe us a favor.
Right.
Make the road nice and nice.
You seem pretty good at driveway stuff.
A lot of problems with the ledge coming down tomorrow to blast the knobs off.
Yeah.
But it's still like 18 feet wide, but safety-wise, just take the tops.
Are they, are they drilling and...
I might have to check out.
Are they drilling and... Dave, Dave, are they drilling and splitting, or are they...
They're gonna hold, they're gonna...
Oh, yeah.
The guy...
And then put the powder in and...
Sad, but the guy who was gonna do it, killed up the concrete the other day. When he, when he put the thing in, it snapped, chuckle ledge came up and...
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. That is sad.
Sad.
All right.
But that's just fire.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Do you have some Mylar?
You sure? Yeah. Want us to sign that now, Fire?
Marker.
We need, we have a Mylar.
Yeah, get you out of here all.
Just one, buried.
Mylar.
And then two poppy.
Sign this thing?
Yeah, so what you're...
Copy here. I'm not gonna touch you, so you don't have to. Get a paper cut.
Yeah, you're gonna feel, we're gonna put a little cover letter on this.
The marker, yeah, that one. Yeah, that, yeah, the Mylar marker. Oh, that's nice. Yeah, 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 Sharpie, yeah.
So basically, would that hold up or nothing? But I don't think that's a matter of... Because...
Well, well, what I was gonna... So, yeah, let me just say to the board. So, so as, as Dave mentioned, we have this easement document that's gotta get recorded. Dave has to go to the Board of Selectmen and get them to sign this, okay? So what I was gonna suggest is that I hold up the Mylar until this, this happens.
Yeah, probably that, that's, should be the way to go.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I just, yeah, so...
They're meeting weekly, too, so, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
They are, you know, if you come in on Monday with a letter on this document to the Selectmen requesting them to endorse it, I'll be happy to attend the meeting and communicate with them about why.
Yeah. I mean, I just want to let you know also, as you know, I did that on my own, making that. I bought the house, I cut it up 30 feet in, so I was gonna do that.
No, right. Right.
I just, Vincent said, well, you know, that's great.
Right.
Just do it the right way, but...
Yeah.
I was thinking on the same line.
The problem is, if you sell the property, Dave, and we don't have that recorded?
You can't, yeah.
No, I understand.
The next owner can say, no, get off my property.
Yeah.
No, and it's for highway plow.
Turnaround.
It's for all that.
Yeah, for all that.
Town, town stuff, not...
And you get, and you get the...
Okay.
So, yeah, if you want to record that.
We doing minutes tonight or no?
Yeah, we're good.
Are we? Are we doing minutes tonight?
We don't have to, unless Mike says they're perfectly fine.
Okay.
Right, Mike?
I, I just stamped it so I can leave, because it's almost my bedtime.
I'm not sure I heard all of that, but...
No, well, it's a stamp after.
On the minutes, perfectly fine, we gotta sign all those plans, too.
I already did them.
Oh, you did, did you?
Hopefully, they'll get you in for their Tuesday meeting.
Me too, bro, it's at 7:00 AM, that's not you.
No, no.
I'll participate, I'll explain it, and then hopefully we'll sign.
We can go to our sign file.
Do you want to do the extension accessory apartments?
Three of them, yeah, we got three of them.
Yeah, so one of them I'm confused about.
Which one?
The Donald, the Garden, 14 Shady Lane. So he's, he says that he owns it, and he's the occupant. And nothing's been checked on it, and the treasurer didn't, um, didn't verify the taxes are paid, so...
There's nobody else...
I don't know, I don't really know if they own it or not.
Okay, let's see what it says on...
So why don't we hold off on that?
Yeah, just clarification. So why would they need an accessory apartment if they own the property?
Right, unless they're gonna rent it out.
Which one's this?
No, the, the occupants, the Donald, the Garden.
The one on Shady Lane?
Yeah.
Oh, Shady Lane, yeah. I don't know what that one's about.
So, and we need the taxes to make sure that they're paid.
Yep.
The other two, I think, are fine.
All right, I'll start passing them. Well, you want to vote on them?
Yeah, um, anybody else want to look at them, or?
No, they look like...
We have the two.
Okay.
Yep.
Both renewals.
Yep, two.
Which one?
Two out of three, so...
Carlson and Hiltz.
Okay, all right, accessory apartment, special permit for...
9 and 11.
121 Wallam Lake Road.
Yeah.
Extension to accessory apartment, special permit for 78 Pine Street.
Taxes, I don't know about the taxes on Pine Street either. We don't have that one either.
It's not attached? Nope, it's missing.
Yeah, it's on the back, double-sided, but we don't have a...[1644.22]
Yeah, because.
Looks like it was submitted. Or was it signed off?
Yeah, it was, yeah. And the taxes were. Yeah, I mean, the quarterly was just due on eight, three.
Pine Street's on hold?
Yep.
And Shady Lane's on hold.
I'll make a motion to grant the accessory apartment extension, a renewal of 121 Wallam Lake Road.
Second.
Motion made, seconded by.
Jake.
Jake?
Sir.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Roll call.
Les Stevens' eye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Jake Schulzberg, aye.
Tracy Sharkey, aye.
Motion passes.
I feel like Les' microphone's the only one that's on.
I, speaking to it, Jake, sir.
I don't think so.
Oh, okay.
Jake has a shared mic with Bill.
It's your, it's the proximity.
And Mike, did you have any meeting minute, um, comments?
You want to go over them or?
No, well, you're here.
Okay, so before we do that, what happened to 10 and 11?
We're passing over.
Pass, it's passing.
Passing over.
On what?
They're incomplete.
Incomplete.
Yeah, they were incomplete.
We just need to make sure they have paid their taxes and then the other one, um, it's confusing, the 14 Shady Lane. I don't know who lives there, who owns it, what's going on with that.
Yeah, you want to do?
Okay, these are coming this way, Les.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay.
Go on. All right, thanks. See you, Fire. Thank you.
We'll see you. Have a good night.
See ya, goodnight. No, that's a no.
What, what is this?
That's a no. We denied that.
We what?
Denied it.
Which one is that?
That one's for Whiten.
Oh, that's the one for Whiten, that's the one, okay.
Right, the covenant.
Just assigning. Those are the ones we just approved, the accessory apartments.
And then you're looking for.
Wallam Lakes, ADS, Wallam Lake, Sola.
Yeah, and that one.
We're going to hold off on that. Why even?
ADS D?
Oh, sorry, I was thinking he was, uh, the other one. You're right.
No, yeah, this is, yeah, this is, yeah, ADS, Wallam Lake, Sola.
Yeah, that's the decision.
Yep.
While you're doing that, can I mention something?
Yes.
Okay. So, as you know, we have a solar bylaw that's proposed to go to the town meeting. As a result of that, Oak Street was concerned that they would now require a special permit if that passes. Their lawyer is advising them this.
No.
So they will be filing a preliminary plan to get a zoning freeze.
A zoning freeze?
A zoning freeze.
Yeah.
Preliminary subdivision. So it doesn't affect them?
Yep.
So as part of the preliminary plan, we're also going to have to follow through and get approval on a definitive plan to get, take advantage of the zoning freeze, the way the statute reads. So.
Yep.
With the board's consent.
Yep.
What I would suggest is that we ask for a minor modification in the language of the solar bylaw and limit its range to all applications after September 12, 2020, which is kind of a meeting date. So the scope shouldn't be limited. Of course, that'll be the moderator's call.
Yeah.
No.
What did? Yeah, what did, what did Richard J say? Because if, my understanding.
He thought it was within the scope, but I wanted to talk to the board before I went to the moderator in the, in the rich ball.
So this is for 45 Oak?
Right.
Because their decision isn't recorded yet?
No, because they're hearing the load and the decision was approving it.
I'm sorry.
Because the solar bylaw was voted and recommended.
Check those, those are done.
Prior to the board making a decision on the, on the, on their process. So even though it's not modified by town meeting, it's, it's backdated. It may go back to the advertising date of the zoning articles. So it may become problematic for them, and that's their lawyer's advice to them.
Yeah.
Okay? So in an effort, because I don't think anybody really wants a subdivision to go in there.
No.
Or even spend the time reviewing a subdivision plan.
Yeah.
That may never get built.
Yeah.
The easy way out would be to limit the, the effectiveness of the proposed solar bylaw.
Yeah.
To the town meeting date.
From, yeah, from adoption? Yeah, that's, I, I would have thought that, um, the, because where, when we opened up our solar bylaw discussions and the proposals, that they already started their discussions. So they're not, you know, they're not on the hook from there, but. But it'd be interesting to see, I'm good with if Richard wants to do that. It's a minor change on.